Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the order, the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting for June 17th, 2019. Kathleen, could you do a roll call and let's see who's here?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Marks?
Here.
Commissioner Mazza?
Here.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Here.
Chair Yaring?
Here.
You have a call.
Very good. Mr. Carrigan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Hands over your head, hats off. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as a law.
Thank you very much. Kathleen, approval of the agenda. No, John, we're supposed to, we do the approval, then the posting. Approval of the agenda.
You've already got the posting?
No, really, that comes next.
Okay, approved.
Your microphone.
Move, we approve the agenda as staff proposes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second, and a nine. Do we need a second?
Yes.
Second?
Aye. All in favor, aye. Kathleen, could you talk to us about the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on June 6th, 2019, with the amended agenda posted on June 12th, 2019.
Very good, thank you. I guess we're gonna, Richard, you're gonna do the staff update on the Woolsey Fire.
Good evening, Chair Yaring and members of the Planning Commission. I'll go over today's update, just to give you a bit more detail on the type of statistics we have. We've been working on being a bit more detailed to answer some of the questions that the Commission has. This chart we showed you at the last meeting, and what we're showing here is in orange, orangish color, those are administrative plan reviews that have been submitted for additions to homes or things beyond the 10%. It could be height, or it could be a change in the footprint, or an addition, like I mentioned. The gray in the middle there is the number of permits, the volume coming in for temporary housing requests to the Planning Department. This is not to Building and Safety. These are the numbers we've approved, and then from us, they move on to Building Safety. And then what you see there in blue in the back, that is the volume of planning verifications. So, just to reiterate, if you see numbers there that are prior to March, those were just like-for-like in-kind replacements. Then we had the code change, with the city council changed when to effect, where a planning verification would allow for an additional 10% addition. And so that's what you're seeing in the time there, starting in April, May, and this month. This page here, we're showing the number of properties that in the upper column there that have been cleared of all debris, and they have also completed all the required inspections in terms of reports on soil testing. So 545 properties are eligible and cleared for rebuilding. There are a total of 791 properties that have been cleared, and the total number of properties even looking at is 834. And these would be ranging from cleanup of the existing single-family residence to accessory structures, so it's not necessarily 834 residences, it's residences and other types of buildings that qualified, or that fell within the Cal Recycle, Cal OES program. What we have here, when we say approved, to be clear, these are not planning department approvals we're going to be talking about on this slide, approvals from the Building and Safety Division. So for accessory fire rebuilds, accessory structures, so these could be anything ranging from a shed, or a garage, or any other type of structure that needs a plan check approval and a planning, building permit issued. We've got five that have been submitted, four of those five have been approved, building permits have been issued. Accessory dwelling units, so this would be your ADU's, second units, guest houses. There are currently 11 of them within the plan check process, one has been cleared for construction. And we've got 20 single-family residences that have been submitted for plan check, and seven of those have been approved and qualify for their building permits to be issued. The last number you see there is that the Building and Safety Divisions received a lot of requests about foundations, and can they be reused? So they've got 26 that are submitted, and they've completed reviews on 18 of those, and it's my understanding those 18 could reuse their foundations. What we have on this one is to show you that so far, as we mentioned, you get six single-family residences that have been issued building permits to rebuild, and we've issued 31 permits to structures that have, single-family residences that have fired damage. So that could range from something as simple as a damaged roof, or it could be something, say a room, or a portion of the house was damaged and it was replaced. And what we have on this slide are just some statistics to show you how things are moving through the different departments in the city, and looking at how many assessments have been completed, for example, wastewater treatment systems, that was a large question that seemed to guide a lot of the types of applications folks have submitted to us in our fire rebuild counter, because folks want to know, do they need to consider a whole new wastewater treatment system, or can they reuse their system? And so this is why it's very important that folks get a licensed inspector out there to complete the assessment, so that that document they have in hand to talk to our environmental health official, so that way they can make a determination. And once again, just to remind everyone, we have staff at our fire rebuild table that can schedule fire rebuild consultations, or if it's possible, we'll just sit down and meet with you right away. You can also email our staff. We've got Andrea's email address on the city's website. She can be, sends an email, phone calls, she tries to answer them, but she's at a public counter, so email's truly best. And the county still has their debris removal operations center in operation in Calabasas. And the LA County Fire Department is continuing to visit City Hall on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the morning hours, to have public counter hours, so anyone can just walk in and ask questions. And once again, these are all resources for folks to use to get more information on fire rebuilds. All you have to do is go to the city's website, and either type in Woolsey Fire, or go to malaburebuilds.org. I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Commissioner Questions?
Yes. Richard, I think you said that the 18 foundation reviews that were completed, all 18 of them were approved as viable?
Yes, that is my understanding from Building Safety.
So is that, I remember hearing a lot early on about how the heat, the fire could really change the chemical composition, and that probably, probably they won't be viable. And so is that maybe not as true as we thought, or is it that what we're seeing are only applications from people that have some, like, really clear hunch that their foundation's gonna work?
It has been primarily folks with, they've come in and they've had discussions with the Building Safety Counterstaff, and I also believe that it's situations where the site's practically flat. These aren't complex foundations, is my understanding. It's not the norm, and there is a lot of discussion. I think the Building and Safety folks don't want to delay people, or have them go down a path that they spend a couple of months working on something, only to find out that it isn't, because they seem to have been pretty honest.
Thank you.
John?
You mentioned accessory dwelling units, where there's been approval for, what, 18 or something like that? But it's my understanding that the city council never passed that law. So what are those buildings? Or are they the trailers, people bring trailers onto their property?
No, those would be folks, we're lumping everything into accessory dwelling units, so that could be a guest house or a second unit, and it's something that was already on the property, a unit that we were able to verify that there were permits for it to be built. It shows up either on the tax assessor's record, and like I mentioned, we found permits. So these are what our code today calls second units, or guest homes.
And they're rebuilt.
Yes, these are replacements of ones that were destroyed.
Okay, whatever happened to accessory dwelling units? Did it ever go to council?
As I've mentioned in the past, the Planning Commission looked at this, and I believe it was September, asked for some changes. We were in the process of making those when the Woolsey Fire happened.
Okay. And...
It's kind of moot, because they're only allowed once you have a house? Is that the way it works?
Yes, it's an accessory, so it can only be there if there's a primary use.
Vice Chair Jennings? Anything? Just Marks? Just have one, Richard. Somebody sent me, I guess it was a postcard that went out. It talks about submit a planning application by November 8th, 2020, and obtain a building permit by November 8th, 2022, and the person said, you know, if I got my building already ready to go, do I have to wait till 2020? Just explain what this is, if you would please.
Sure, the purpose of those postcards is that they were to be a reminder that there are deadlines that will be coming up of when the, you'll always be able to rebuild, you put a structure back on a property, obviously, but all of the grandfathering provisions are going to expire on those dates. And so any structure that's proposed after those dates, or proposed by the Planning Department, or say if you try to obtain building permits beyond those dates, that structure will not be eligible to receive, perhaps it was built too close to a property line, so that setback now will have to be, you'll have to move the structure to comply with current setbacks. You can put a home back, but it will need to comply with the current requirements.
Does that mean you need a completed file by that date?
You need to have a planning approval in hand. You have the date to submit the application, and then we have a deadline on when to have your planning approval.
All right, Richard, thank you very much. Anybody else? No? All right, let's move along to public, no, update on staff, update on whether Nobu Restaurant submitted a conditional use permit.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. You may recall a few meetings ago, when you were last discussing the Nobu CUP compliance matter, that the way the item was left was that it was continued to, what was the date?
I believe it was the August 5th, it was the first meeting in August, I believe August 5th.
That's right. I knew there was an eight and a five. August 5th, and with the caveat that if a CUP amendment application were submitted, then we would not calendar it for that meeting, but instead process the CUP amendment application. They did submit their CUP amendment application, so we're in the process of reviewing that, and we'll get it before you as soon as we possibly can.
Yeah, thank you. I've got a speaker slip for Mark Britton. How you doing?
Hi, guys. Thank you for letting me review what I spoke about two meetings ago. I was gonna be here two weeks ago, but I had other obligations, and I don't know if we, I gave you the packet, it had a number of things in there. Excuse me. It had the letter, that was that in-your-face letter about the Hakims, about all the illegal parking spaces at my office, a 22775 PCH. I provided you with photographs of each and every parking space, and there's not one over seven feet, some are six feet, and the ones that lead right up to the wall, those ridiculous, you know, these are not storage spaces, these are parking spaces, and you can't get out of your car. So I provided two videos, one from one of my clients, and as you saw when they pulled, if you looked at all the stuff that I gave you, they pulled into the parking space and could not get out of the car. Well, then that's not a parking space, that's not reasonable, and he certainly couldn't get his 110-pound German Shepherd out of the car. Then the second video was a car that was theoretically parked legally at high-tide parking space, except when they parked legally in the high-tide parking space, they're blocking two of my spaces. So that doesn't work. So I put it up there, that's part of the letter from the Hakim's lawyer, and there are three key words there. There's a plan, there's requirements, and they're compliant. Well, number one, I don't believe there's a plan. And if there is a plan, nobody's gonna find it, because nobody's gonna have their name on that plan that says seven-foot parking spaces. Malibu says the parking spaces should be nine feet wide. So instead of 16 spaces there in a handicap, it should be 11 spaces there. And then there will be no spaces for my practice, and then my lease will be null and void, is what I want. So I just want to review it, I hope you looked at the package. My idea is to give somebody here a week to find that mysterious plan. I'm gonna be at the city council meeting on the 24th, and I'm simply going to repaint all the lines on Tuesday, the 25th. That's it. So we'll take it from there. Maybe the Hakims will be sitting there, and I'd love to be in their face.
Thank you, sir. Paul Grisanti.
Greetings, Chair and Commissioners. I wanted to tell you how much I'm looking forward to being here in two weeks, on July the 1st, to see the community's response to the TDSF mailers we've all been getting that show us what that ordinance you'll be, you'll be considering at that time will do to their individual properties. And I know you guys didn't write the ordinance, or asked that it be written, but unfortunately you get first crack at it. So I'm looking forward to seeing you, I'm hoping that every property owner in Malibu shows up to tell you what they think about the reclassification of their property. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, anybody else like to comment during public comments? No, we'll close them down, bring it back to the Commissioners. Commissioner Marks, would you like to start?
Sure. First off, I just wanted to kind of, you know, share that we got a chance to attend the Malibu Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Expo this Saturday, and it was pretty informative. I was glad to get out there, and some good input from different kind of vendors, community members, et cetera. I saw a few of those in the audience here as well, so yeah, just was a good session, and some good information shared there, so that's all I got for now.
Okay. Commissioner Hill? Pass. Mazza?
While I get my act together, I just want to mention something with public safety. I went to the public safety meeting where they discussed putting a homeless parking lot in overnight at Dan Blocker Beach, and the Public Safety Commission turned it down because they, they were made aware of the Boise decision, which allows anybody homeless in Malibu to sleep on any public property, which that would open that up. So you will notice that there's quite a few RVs coming to town, and this is just the very beginning, due to this District 9 decision. They've moved up to about, well, they moved up to the east side, they're starting to show up at Dan Blocker Beach, across from Corral, Corral Beach Restaurant, and more than likely, they'll start showing up at Zuma Beach fairly quickly. One of the disturbing parts of the ruling is, you don't have to be in an RV, you can camp anywhere you want. So my experience in Hawaii is those camps can get up to 5,000 people in them. Anyway, that's one, I've got some other comments, but wait a minute.
All right, I've got just two, and one, Paul, your TDSF letter, I did get one of your letters, okay? And I've got a bunch of calls about it, so you're making an impact. And the calls I got say, who are these people? All right, because it starts off saying, there's a growing group of your neighbors concerned. Now, I talk to my neighbors a lot, nobody's come up to me and said they're concerned. I go down through the analysis you got in the letter, and it's not correct, even based upon what the city council said. And that's not surprising, because down at the bottom, you got a footnote that says, please note these TDF calculations are not based on a licensed survey, so they may be right, may be wrong. And then the most amazing thing, at the salutation, it says, thank you, your TDSF team. Who is that? Who are these people? Okay? I think Hounds Letts this morning in his newsletter called them murky, that's murky. I sort of said, I use the word weasely, but that's okay. But then what happens, if you look at the address at the bottom of the letter, that's the address of Don Schmitz's office. So I say, well, geez, why wouldn't Don put his name on the letter? And why wouldn't he identify the rest of the people? So, look, here's the deal, July 1st, we're gonna have the mansionization discussion, I encourage you to come, I encourage you to think about it, give us your comments. What I'm seeing so far is the people who are opposed to it are the people who, well, I don't want to say someone who's gonna get me in trouble, are not people necessarily concerned with the real quality of Malibu. But come July 1st, let's talk about it, see what we can come up with. All right, fair enough. I've got one other item, and I want to tell you folks a little total temporary use permit story. The temporary use permits, just for a little background, what they are, if you've got a piece of property that's zoned for, you know, whatever, and you want to do something unusual on that, you've got to get a temporary use permit. And they're fairly simple to get, I mean, the city hands them out like chocolate chip cookies. You gotta tell them what it is, the city will take a look at what you're trying to do, they'll put some rules around it to make sure that the neighborhood is protected, and then they'll issue a permit. All you gotta do is sort of adhere to the rules. And one of the rules are, that the permit has to be issued 24 days before the event is scheduled. And that gives, and there's a reason for that, that gives everybody a chance to get noticed, if they've got a concern, they can appeal, and it sort of makes sure that both parties are taken care of. So over the course of the last week or so, and you won't hand those down, John, so people can follow this, there was a temporary use permit going through the city that got approved on June 6th, for an event that was gonna take place on June 8th. Now, as best I could tell, that didn't meet the 24-day condition, all right? So I appealed, and my appeal was denied. And so after about six communications with the city attorney, I asked him to please put in writing what the reasons were that my appeal had been denied. And I got a letter back from him, okay? Two-page letter, basically full of lies. Now, let me take you through that, okay? And let's go back to the beginning, remember, you have to have it done within 24 days, otherwise the permit should not have been put out. That's not mentioned anywhere in this letter, totally ignores that. What he does, he says, Steve, I denied your appeal because your Whole Foods, or your appeal did not contain the conditions of why you were appealing. All right? And so I looked up the regulations, and Municipal Code 1704220, Appeal of Action, says the appellant shall have an additional 10 days following the date of the filing of the appeal to submit to the city clerk in writing the specific grounds for the appeal. So I had 10 days, basically, just go back a second. I got a copy of the appeal at 8:30 on Friday morning, a copy of the temporary use permit at 8:30 Friday morning, quarter to nine, I was in City Hall appealing it. And I had 10 days after that to list all the grounds. And matter of fact, if you look at the appeal form, it's like in 30-point type on that form that says you got an additional 10 days. So telling me that I didn't have all the stuff I needed was a lie. Second thing. I got the appeal. The appellant, okay, they said that the appeal arrived the day before the event, and so the applicant did not have the constitutional right to a hearing, to get an appeal, to go through all the hearing stuff, and that actually was correct, because that's why they have a 24-day timeframe to get it approved before the event takes place. So everybody does have a chance to appeal, so everybody's constitutional rights are taken care of, and what he said, he says, this would, if we had, if he had accepted my appeal, this would have unconstitutionally denied the applicant his due process rights, which include at minimum notice and an opportunity to be heard before the permit is denied. Those same rights the residents have, right? You've got the same rights to be heard, to appeal, and make sure all that's done before this thing starts to take place.
Commissioner Yaring, I just want to caution you, if you're gonna be disclosing an attorney-client privileged communication, I advise you not to do so.
I'm not done. You're not my, I submitted this not as a planning commissioner, but as an independent person. You were not my attorney, I was not your client, if you would have sent me this letter as an attorney, I would have fired you. All right, so let's keep going. The next thing he tells me is, the only person that can appeal a temporary use permit is the applicant. Right? So all of you who have ever had a temporary use permit, somebody taking place next to your house, that you have a concern with, according to our city attorney, you have no rights to appeal. And again, if you read the code, Code 1704220, Appeal of Action, any person aggrieved by a decision of any portion of that decision made by the planning manager or director under provisions of the title in connection with the temporary use permit, may appeal such action to the Planning Commission. So the fact that he tells me I couldn't appeal because I wasn't the applicant was another lie. Now, on the next item, Jeff, he brought you in, okay? Because he said, I do not have, as a, as a planning commissioner, I'm not allowed to appeal a temporary use permit, even if I do it as an individual resident. And he says, that is a result of an ordinance you passed back in 2004, which denied my rights to go out and file an appeal. You remember that?
No.
I don't believe, I understand, because it's not true. It never happened, all right?
What does this have to do with the business of this commission?
What this has to do with the business of the commission, let me go back and tell you, okay? What basically happened was that city staff wanted to do a favor for a commercial developer. So they ignored Malibu Municipal Code, and issued a temporary use permit two days before the event, when it was supposed to be 24. Then they went to the city attorney, and had him concoct a series of lies to try and either cover it up, or try to justify it. That, in my opinion, is a textbook definition of corruption. All right? You ignored the rules, and then have your city attorney lie about them. Now, they gave the developer a gift at the same time they screwed over the residents. They took away our right to receive proper noticing for the permit, they took away the residents' right to appeal the permit, and they took away our right to receive honest answers from individuals in this building who are supposed to be representing us. And it's not the first time. And you can go back, you look at Nobu, it's been six years they've been parking off-site. You've got Soho, you've got 22,000 square feet of living walls that never showed up at Whole Foods, and you've got the Paradise Cove fashion thing, okay? So why do we have people in this building, including our city attorney, lying to us? They lie because no one is holding them accountable. And if we do not make an effort to change that, those lies and corruption will continue. The fact that our city attorney lies should be especially troubling. Every reason he gave me for denying my appeal was a lie. Going forward, I do not know how the Planning Commission, or the city council, or anyone for that matter, can believe anything he says seriously. Matter of fact, going forward, I don't understand how the city of Malibu can continue to employ him as an attorney. So where do we go from here? From up here in the dais, I'm certain the Planning Commissioners will ask you the truth and point out, point out when we do not get it. But that's not enough. We need your help. Make some noise. Call city council member Rick Mullin, ask him if lying was allowed when he was in the Marines. And if it was not allowed there, why is it okay here? Ask Skylar, Jefferson, and Mikey what they would do if their business lawyers lied to them. Make some noise, make it early, make it often, and I'm going to do that every chance I get up here. This is gonna be a long fight, but it's something we're gonna have to do. And let me close with the Chinese proverb, fish rot from the head down. And that's what's going on in this City Hall, and the smell's getting worse every day. John, get something?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on another news item that hit this week, and that was the, what's, city admits was a fiasco at Paradise Cove. And the newspapers covered it as, gee, we got blindsided by an applicant. Well, I got inundated when weird things happen, people call me up. And the prior week, they started building this huge stage on the beach, and I got like 10 calls, so I notified the compliance officer, he said, I don't know anything about it, I'll go take a look. He called me back and said, oh, it's a film permit, I've got nothing to do with it. So I told him all it was a film permit. Couple of them called the film office, and they refused to give them a copy of the permit. But they were told who it was, it was Yves Saint Laurent's fashion show. So I Googled it, it was internationally advertised, hundreds of ads, videos. So I forwarded on that to City Hall. So I forwarded on that to City Hall, say, "It's an event, it's not a film." And I got the answer, and this is on Monday, I got the answer, "Well, it's been approved by senior city staff." So I dropped it. But you, you should not believe that they were blindsided, they knew all about it, it was not a film, it was a, it was a 500-person event. So, again, we have to live in a world of transparency. Now, when we have all this fake news and all this stuff about Washington, we should hold our city to a better standard than that. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Bonnie, hold you.
Good evening, everyone. I want to just mention a couple of things, not to belabor the TUP issue, but the, the event was noticed more than 30 days in advance, and there was nothing in the permit application that was not approvable, so it was approved. The, the timelines are not always practically possible because of other agency reviews and things that are associated with TUPs. This is not the only TUP that has been approved less than 24 days in advance, there's nothing special about this TUP. So I'll leave that there. Regarding the film permit, there were misrepresentations in the application, as the city manager indicated at the council meeting last week, there is a lot of re-looking at the film permitting process to make sure that things like this don't happen again. That was, it was never the intention that something of that scale be permitted under a film permit. So that is also something that is under further review. As was mentioned earlier, the Total Development Square footage ordinance will be coming to the planning commission on July 1st. It is an important topic for the community, so I hope we'll get a lot of public participation. Also, the next city council meeting on June 24th will include two important items, the, the annual budget, as well as the earth-friendly management plan, which has been of a lot of interest in the community also. So that concludes my remarks.
Question?
Gotcha.
Bonnie, can, because of this timing issue on TUPs, can somebody appeal before it's issued?
I, I don't want to get into all of this at this point, but I just wanted to give you the background on this particular one.
Okay, the other one is, when Whole Foods was approved for occupancy, was that a conditional approval? Do they have any conditions on anything else to do?
Um, Whole Foods, the coastal development permit conditions have been satisfied and planning signed off on that, on the CDP application. There are certain conditions that are kind of ongoing, like monitoring of the sycamore trees that were required as replacement trees for the eight trees that were removed, and probably some other things that I don't remember off the top of my head, but yes, we'll be monitoring the project going forward for the, you know, growing in of the green walls that's been discussed here, as, and, as well as compliance with regu, you know, all the other operating conditions and things like that.
Well, the reason I asked if it was a conditional approval is with the conditional approval, theoretically, they cannot meet the conditions and the permit can be pulled, whereas if it isn't a conditional approval, it's just done.
I mean, the project, the project has been approved, it's been finalized, and so at this point, they, the conditions of the permit that still have to be met are anything to do with the tenant improvements and the operational conditions.
So if the trees never grow, or the vines never grow, no big deal?
Those are, those are enforcement issues, as I mentioned.
Just enforcement, but how do you enforce something that doesn't grow?
If, if the walls don't grow in as they are proposed to grow in, then that would be an enforcement issue.
Okay. What is the date they're supposed to be in, bud?
18 to 24 months is, is what the, is associated with the approved plan.
Is that in writing someplace?
Um, it's just...
How can you enforce it if it's not in writing?
There's...
How can we enforce it if it's not in writing?
If the, if it's apparent that, um...
But isn't that the same problem we have with Nobu? I mean, we're trying to enforce something and they're saying, "Well, you don't have it," I mean, so we didn't learn from that, I guess, huh? Okay, never mind. Consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything?
I'd like to pull B2, B3, and B5.
Okay, can we get an approval of B1, B, you, B4?
Yeah.
B1 and B4.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Did we have a second on that? Okay, got it. Aye.
Okay, John? Extension coastal development permit. Okay. Permit number 14083, conditional use permit 16001, tenant of parcel map 14001, offered to dedicate 25350 Malibu Road.
Right.
And I, do we have a staff report, please?
Sure. Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. Item 3B2 is the first-time extension for the property located at 25350 Malibu Road. The original CDP was set to expire May 2nd, 2019. The applicant submitted the time extension in April of 2019. The original CDP was for an interior extra remodel in additions to an existing four-unit, four-unit apartment complex. The application included a CUP to convert the apartment complex to a four-unit condo. The application includes a due clause letter from the applicant that states complications moving forward with construction due to offering a lease agreement to a Woolsey fire victim. So far, a building permit has been applied for, but not completely pulled, and I don't believe any construction has begun. And the approval for the time extension would extend the expiration period to May 2nd, 2021.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, my question is...
Because we've got a speaker, we've got...
Oh, okay, let's have speakers.
Clyde?
Yeah.
And I guess you're here for questions, do you have anything you'd like to start with?
I have a question.
Okay, John, go ahead then.
Can we take disclosures before the public comment?
Any disclosures?
I saw the property from the outside several months ago when the neighbor was before us on a matter, and I didn't learn anything in the, not in the report.
I talked to Jessica this afternoon and reviewed what, if any, building permits were issued, and I was told none.
Commissioner Marks?
Familiar with the property, drive by it every day, but nothing beyond the staff report.
Yeah, I, I think I've been there, but it's been a while, so it doesn't really click. Go ahead, John.
Okay, well, my concern here is that to extend a building permit, you need to make an effort to try to get a building permit. And economic reasons, as far as income goes, you know, we have certain things we've done where they become a widow, or this or that, but not to the opportunity to make some money are not included. So, as I understand it, in the three years it's been out there, nothing has been done. And therefore, it's not eligible for an extension.
I'm Clyde Dawson, I'm the architect for the project, and my address is 2895 PCH Malibu. This project has actually been ongoing, and we were ready at a point where the building permit could be approved in last October, and then nothing was able to be done on the project through plan check, et cetera, due to the Woolsey fire. And we got an extension from the building department, and my, my client is actually ready to start construction on it as soon as these Woolsey fire people move out in the end of October, is my understanding. And so we are ready for a, a building permit.
Okay, Jessica, do we have a building permit? Could they start building? Has it been submitted for engineering, plumbing, blah, 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 blah?
I believe the only thing that was submitted so far was the building, it was applied for the interior and exterior remodel, but there wasn't anything specific. There was something else about a, the plumbing permit, but that was kind of just standard.
But that was for a repair, wasn't it?
Right.
We've been through plan check.
You've been through plan check?
Yeah.
The city records don't appear to show that.
Well, I don't understand what that is the case.
That's, if they've been through plan check, there's no problem. If they haven't, there's a big problem. So that's...
It only, it only said, uh, open, the building interior extra remodel permit was open. They generally, once they get to a certain point in plan check, convert it from open to permit issued, and then they'll have finalized at some point, too, but...
So is the project's been submitted into plan check, and so you're going through plan check now?
A, a long time ago it was submitted, yes. In fact, uh...
So the plan check remains open until you pull the permit?
I'm just looking for something, there was from Craig George, I believe it was, where we'd asked for an extension a few months back.
You have any sign-offs on any, anything by anybody?
Well, I wasn't handling it, somebody else in my office was.
Okay, well, then I would, I would like to move that we continue this until the next meeting and find out.
What would you like? You want a list of all the sign-offs on there?
We just wanted the staff to tell us that...
Something's been signed up.
Something's been, they've been diligently, I think their term is diligently, working on obtaining their permit.
We could probably get some additional clarification while the meeting continues, if you'd like us to do that and come back to this in a little while.
You can move this to the end of the calendar.
Okay, I move it to, I'd move that we move it to the end of the calendar.
I'd, I'd like to add further clarification on this.
Second, we need a second and a...
I'll second that, but we'd know the question from...
Yeah, for, for coming back with some questions. It seems like the basis here that they're relying on is, for the due cause on the extension is that access to the property is restricted because, because of existing leases, and so I'd want to hear about what the lease period is, and have they not expired during this period so that you could have gone to work?
I think what, what they've said is that they have tenants in through the end of October 2019, and they are waiting to pull construction permits until the, the leases run out.
Right, but it's been three years, so you have a three-year lease, or leases are typically like a year, right? So...
I mean, my lease is 16 months, so I mean, leases are all over the place.
Well, it says in the staff report, this lease was issued after the fire.
Right.
All right.
So through October to accommodate the fire victims.
Okay.
And I just wanted to clarify for what we'd want to have by the end of the meeting, then according to what's written, to meet John's request, it would be the applicant has exercised due diligence in its efforts to commence the permit project, such as contracting for completing necessarily studies, reports, drawings, and plans, so anything you'd have that would help support that, if we could have it by the end of the meeting.
Okay, we need to vote on that.
Kathleen, roll call?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Yearing?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
What was the other one?
You got 3B.
B3.
B3. This is the extension of the amortization schedule, number 19001, a request for extension of the amortization schedule for legal non-conforming motel use. Can we have a, this is 3B3, Mr. Perry, staff report, please?
Yes, the next item is 3B3, and it is an extension of amortization period for 22752 Pacific Coast Highway, the Nobu Ryokan Motel. In July of 21, July 21st, 2014, the planning commission granted a five-year extension to allow a time to process a zone text amendment and local coastal program amendment to change the zoning district from CC to CV2. Environmental review is underway and subject applications have been submitted to the city. Additional time has been requested to complete the sequel review, so the applicant has applied for a time extension for a period of the shorter of five years or the period of time it takes to process the zone change.
Okay.
Questions?
Here's my big question. This has been converted from a CV1 zone change to a CV2 zone change.
We're actually processing that right now, and it's going to come before you in the next couple of months.
Okay, but we still need an extension to do that.
Right, we, yes.
Okay, so what I'm wondering is, this is all predicated, this is a zone extension, the whole staff report is predicated on a CV2 change. But a CV2 change, a CV2, the only difference between a CV1 and a CV2 is the CV2, as far as this project goes, is the, both have swimming pools, both have everything, but one's a hotel, CV2, and one's a motel, CV1. It's the only difference. If you look at the compliance table, we're being asked to hold this off so we can review a CV2 when, and I confirmed this with Richard today, I should have disclosed that, you can't have a hotel on that site because there is no potential for parking for two rooms per, per unit. There is no potential, we all know that.
Well, the, the building's not going to change, the building is the building.
The use is going to change. And the use being a hotel requires two parking spaces, unless Richard was wrong...
The proposed, well, what, what's before you right now is to maintain the existing legal non-conforming use pending the zone change being completed, and so at the time that the zone change comes before you, you can evaluate what, you know, whether you want to approve the zone change or not. But right now, all it is, is allowing the existing motel use to continue while the other thing is pending.
Well, maybe I should ask Trevor this. The reason we are extending this is so they can make an application for a use that cannot be used on that site.
Well, the...
So, so...
The uses, I'll just point out, the use is also legal non-conforming with respect to motel parking, too. So in either CV1 or CV2, the parking is going to be legal non-conforming.
Well, I was told, and maybe this is incorrect by the, Richard, that when you change zoning, you have to comply with the new zoning.
So the conditional use permits that they have applied for, for both properties, are not proposing to convert it to a hotel, they're converting it to a bed and breakfast, which has reduced...
This is why, this is why I'm wondering why we're, we're extending this to convert it to a hotel instead of a bed and breakfast. Why is it CV2 instead of CV1?
And just that, Mr. Patrick Perry is here, if you would like to speak or anything. And let me open up the public hearing.
Can we take disclosures before we open the hearing?
Any disclosures?
None.
None?
None.
Six years ago, I appealed to the Coastal Commission, the, what I considered a crazy decision by the planning commission. By agreement, I withdrew that, that appeal. That's where it stands.
Mr. Perry?
Good evening, Patrick Perry. I represent the owner of the property, Malibu Cantina LLC. Bonnie's right, what we've applied for, well, actually, we've applied for a general plan amendment, a zone change, conditional use permits, and a local coastal program amendment. All of those are required in order to maintain the existing use on the property, which is currently a motel use, it's not a hotel use. What we've applied for under the conditional use permit, as Jessica said, is for bed and breakfast use. Bed and breakfast uses are permitted as conditional uses under both the CV1 and the CV2 zone. We submitted these applications, well, first of all, I was here five years ago requesting the original extension of the amortization period. We asked for enough time to actually process these applications through to completion, the longer of either five years or to process the applications. We were given the shorter of either five years or that amount of time because no one possibly believed that it could take five years to get this processed. We submitted applications in November of 2017, and, and we're still not done. When we submitted this current application, we asked for six months because we want to get this done. We don't want another five years. And we don't want, you know, there to be any excuse to take any more time than is absolutely necessary to get this done. Now, it is true that a CV, or that a hotel is permitted within a CV2 zone, it's not permitted in the CV1 zone. And the reason why we made the decision, because originally we were going to apply for CV1, we made the decision to apply for CV2, because if in the future it was deemed desirable and was possible to put a hotel use on the property, we didn't want to have to go through the whole zone change application process again. If it's going to take this... we didn't want to have to go through the whole zone change application process again, um, if it's gonna take this long. So, we said, okay, we'll go with the CV2, um, but we still want the bed and breakfast, still a conditional use in the CV2 zone as well as the CV1. If we were to convert to a hotel, um, and I'm not saying that wouldn't necessarily ever happen, it would require a new CUP. It would still come back before you, and you would have the opportunity to review that and approve that. But we're just trying to skip a step, uh, from CV1 to CV2 so that we don't have to go back through the zone change process, which is a legislative requirement, has to go all the way to City Council. Also would require Coastal Commission approval, and we'd have to go through that process again. So, that's the justification, and if you have any questions, I'm available.
You're looking for six months?
That, that's what we were asking for. We think that we can try to get this done within six months.
This is for two years, isn't it?
The, we've, we've proposed more time than that because the Coastal Commission certification process isn't something that we can account for. Our intention is to get this done as quickly as possible. Also, it's, um, it's been a long time, I agree. But I'm, I'd be a little concerned that six months might not account for the entire process.
So, what are we doing this time? Two years?
We've, we've proposed five years.
Five years? So, we're talking 10 years total?
I don't believe that it will take five years. I think it'll be done by the end of this, well, within a year.
Okay, in the meantime, the uses, the swimming pool use on, on the Tidepool Gallery property is still prohibited, correct?
Right, that's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Jeff?
Could we- Thank you.
Could we do like two years with some checking or something? Like a year, year and a half or something, or maybe six months? You could, I mean, you could get a report, but you're, whatever you grant for the extension would be the length of the extension.
Jeff, you pulled, what do you?
Well, I think five years is excessive, but-
You happy with it?
It's their money.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, uh-
We have to vote, Brazil?
Yeah, I guess I have to, uh, move to accept staff's report.
Staff's recommendation?
Staff's recommendation.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving along, we got-
Okay, the third one was 3B5.
Administrative Coastal Development Permit Woolsey Fire 19001. Application to install an alternative onsite wastewater treatment system to replace the existing damaged system as a result of the fire. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is, um, as you said, an application to, um, replace the onsite wastewater treatment system underneath the existing driveway of the native motel at 28920 Pacific Coast Highway and abandon the existing onsite wastewater treatment system. The, uh, existing system was, uh, destroyed as a result of the Woolsey Fire, um, and the replacement system is in a different location, um, higher up on the existing driveway.
Okay?
Okay, several questions.
Disclosures.
Okay, I, I live on the same riparian habitat, but about at least a thousand feet away.
Jeff, any?
No, no. None.
And I did talk to Richard this afternoon on several items. Mainly, the reason for this being a separate application. But my questions are, main question is-
If I can make my disclosure briefly, um, I just wanted to clarify, I misstated my disclosure on the, uh, Malibu Road property. I live down the street from this property. So, I'm familiar with this property, but I didn't visit, so there was no disclosure necessary on the other one.
That's correct.
Down the street from this property is about four miles?
Eh, give or take.
Okay.
Well, I drive by it every day, so.
Okay, every house on PCH, huh? First question is, about a month and a half ago, I was driving by and I saw three large backhoes digging up where the septic tanks are going on this project. Has this project already been done?
No, the, the work that's been completed on the site has been debris removal for the, um, the accessory structure that was destroyed by the fire as well as, um, testing for the, uh, percolation. I believe the applicant is here to discuss, um, any other work that you may have seen on the site. I was, um, on the site, um, a little bit more than a month ago and, and didn't see anything untoward, but he can speak to what you might have seen.
Quick question then. Yeah, you're gonna have to state your name.
Yeah, you gotta fill out speaker slip also.
Okay.
One year, one year.
No, when you're done.
Okay, alright.
If we have disclosures before, since he's gonna speak.
We just had disclosures.
You're right, you're right.
Give me your name, please. Well, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Sean Gilbert, uh, owner of 28920 Pacific Coast Highway. As you guys are aware of, from the application, we were hit hard by the Woolsey Fire. We had, we have four and a half acres of landscape that was completely scorched and some outstructures that were completely destroyed. It was kind of a chaotic couple of weeks after the fire, and it wasn't till then that we, um, realized that the septic, uh, was damaged, not only by the fire, but we were one of the fortunate ones where the fire department responded to, and they drove over some of the seepage pits and crushed them. So, the, the, the system itself completely failed. From that point on, we've been extremely diligent about, uh, working with city, city staff to get to this point. You know, getting this approved today would go a long way towards getting, you know, us recovering from what's been kind of a devastating and brutal seven months. I encourage you guys to ask any questions you have. I'm here tonight to answer them and, and always available. As it relates to work on the property, Justine's right, uh, we, we did complete the debris removal program. Uh, they did have to remove, I think, six inches of the soil in order to clear it. And then what we also had to do in order to shift it further away from, um, the slope, we moved it all the way to the top of the property is where the septic tank is proposed. So, currently it was at the bottom, but that doesn't meet current code for wastewater. It's the 150-foot setback rule. So, that's the farthest part on the property we can go. So, what you saw was probably massive drill rigs that took us several months to get out there, um, between the rains and however, how busy everyone's been. It's been, it's been kind of a nightmare to get them out there. We got them out there, it cost me $50,000 to do the testing, and I had to, had to bring them back a couple of weeks later because they didn't, they didn't finish it. So, um, it's been a process. Um, we've not quite known how to approach it at times because we are a commercial property, and I think 99.9% of the properties affected were residential. So, a lot of them, there was a, you know, a clearer path, so we, we got going on, um, the, the, the deck and everything that was destroyed. We started that kind of application, then the septic got looped into it, so then we had to start that, and then with the rains, we got significantly delayed. So, that's why we kind of ran parallel tracks, but we're here today.
If you'd stay there, I'm gonna ask some questions of Justine, and then I'll have you comment. This, according to the staff report, this project is part of a bigger project, that's part of which is gonna come to us later.
Shaking her head, no.
You're shaking your head, no, but when I read it, it says they are applying to remodel the hotel, to add a swimming pool, to, uh, and do interior remodels, uh, exterior remodels, um, additional septic pits, uh, add a, add a grease trap, that's part of this one. But, it's, I understand it, it's, it says very clearly in the staff report that, that project was bifurcated into the septic and then the rest of it later. Is that right?
So, the projects are happening simultaneously. The other project is an administrative plan review, so it won't come before you. But, um, it is, uh, also a fire rebuild project. Um, they're repairing damage to the motel. They are, um, rebuilding the structure that burned, rebuilding, uh, the deck that burned, uh, adding a pool, and, uh, moving the parking, um, as a result of the fire department requirements.
Yeah, so I, I can speak to it.
Well, let me finish. Uh, and you're adding a kitchen?
No, so the kitchen is, the kitchen that you might see, um, on, well, if you looked at the APR plans that are proposed or any of the previously existing, um, plans, there, there's a kitchenette that has always been there, and I, um, have the tax assessor records that show that that was part of the building built in 1949. There is no new kitchen proposed as part of this project, uh, either project. There might be a kitchen proposed in the future, um, but that isn't any, that isn't proposed in any of the projects so far. The, um, grease interceptor is required, or, uh, I believe Craig was saying was required for, um, the kitchenette as it stands today. And they, um, built it in case there is a kitchen proposed in the future, and environmental health is aware of that and double-checked that there is no new kitchen or kitchen facilities proposed at this time.
So, as I understand it, you're not gonna come in and apply for a kitchen, and you-
No, I mean, I, basically, I'll tell you, a lot of the requirements that have been put on me is, is due to the fire department. I mean, I am having to extend the water line on Canaan Road 200 feet, uh, to put a new fire hydrant in front of mine. There's, you know, issues with the current width of the property, a lot of things. This is an old, old building. I had no intention on moving walls or shifting buildings, the fire hit. So, I'm, I'm really having to deal with a lot of stuff through the fire department as well as kind of handicap ADA stuff. So, that's the stuff we're rebuilding and, and has lumped into kind of the remodel, but it's nothing more than that. You know, for me, from a practical standpoint, I said, you know, we, we do have this existing kitchen in there. I'm allowed to serve guests only at some point. I do have to come back in front of you guys. I do have to go through all, you know, get through all the hurdles. But I, my goal isn't to go rip up the driveway again, take my, my motel offline, um, and, and have to go through that process. So, it took me 50, 70 grand to get the, the testing done, so I did it for everything. I've, I've kind of tried to comply with everything environmental health came. It's been painful at times, but, um, it's, I'm trying to do it right, and I'm trying to do it the first time and the only time, um, and knowing that for the bigger things, I'm ultimately gonna have to come back to the planning department in front of you guys.
Okay, uh, Justine, there's two proposed extension pits down by the river. Are those required? And can they be in a, a, uh, what do they call this, a consent item, if they're appealable coastal zone?
The expansion pits, as I know them, uh, the two additional ones was mainly, um, you know, it's, it's weird up there that, I mean, some parked extremely well and other ones did not. The expansion pits will not be connected at this time. It's, it's laid out very clearly in the, uh, report that environmental health issued and approved for me. It's really in case something happens, um, with the other ones, and they don't perform as well as we thought. So, therefore, expansion, you know, they're called expansion pits for those purposes. Any use of those, um, is obviously a whole other discussion that, that we have to kind of go through. So, it's really, I'm just trying to be thoughtful about, um, I'm gonna have to try, put in a brand-new driveway, and I don't want to rip it up again in order just to drill a pit and/or put stuff in it in the future.
Well, usually, now, this is Justine's question. Are the expand, usually expansion pits are required under a septic permit? Expansion pit locations. How do we grant an extension, uh, and a, the septic permit without having extension pits approved, locations approved?
I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding your question, I'm so sorry.
Well, usually when we, we, usually when we have a septic permit, especially in commercial, uh, there's a requirement to have 100% expansion. Apparently, in this project, the expansion pits are next to the blue line stream, and they're excluded from this permit, but they're usually required to get a septic permit.
They're being built at this point.
They're being built?
Yes, yeah, they are part and approved, but what, again, I'm not a septic guy, but I essentially cannot connect them until I go back through environmental health to use them, so they will be installed.
So, my question is, this is, it's right on the map, it's in a blue line stream. Setback. So, how do we approve it if it's not before us, and they're, they're building it?
I think it is before you.
It is.
It is before you. It's listed actually on the, oh, shoot, I don't know what page number this is.
You say nothing's, you say nothing's within the setback, and it's clearly within the setback. It shows it. And it shows, it shows it on, on, uh, it shows the setback line on the plans that we got. So, I'm wondering how you had included it in a non-appealable project that's appealable, if they are there?
Pursuant to the LIP in chapter 13 dash 29, and this is in the staff report, you are allowed to process wastewater treatment systems administratively within the appealed jurisdiction. And further on this, uh, this is located in the Point Doom area, and in the Point Doom area, while we acknowledge that to be a blue line stream, the, uh, the code section, uh, in chapter four of the LIP states that in the Point Doom area specifically, and this is below where it talks about stream setbacks, all development shall be cited to avoid encroachment on four-to-one slopes, and that's what they've done consistent here. And that appears to be a consistent policy, uh, in front of the Planning Commission and in CDPs. We did look at CDPs in the area. We found, uh, we, we're not able to find any along Selfridge administrative coastal development permits for this type of development, but we did find one on Doom Drive for the property that directly abuts this, uh, wildlife, excuse me, uh, wildlife at the eastern end of this property line. And in that report, and this could be perhaps where some of the confusion is coming, that went before the Planning Commission, we acknowledged the blue line stream, but then we go on further to say that pursuant to the LIP, because we are within the Point Doom neighborhood, the development's been cited to avoid four-to-one slopes so that it's consistent with the riparian setback requirements of the ESHA chapter in the LIP. So, this is something that has been approved before on a different property and is consistent with what we've done.
Okay, so, there is no other application pending for more improvement on this property right now? This project has not been bifurcated?
There is an APR that's, that's pending, that the, that's an administrative approval that, um, is being processed.
And what is that for?
The work that Justine described earlier, interior, exterior remodel, et cetera.
Okay, so here's my main question. Without that, they, they say they need this, this system approved outside of that. Apparently, that one needs to deal with something else.
Your, your question is about separating the two applications?
Well, the question is, why? If you're applying to be able to open your hotel, why do you need a septic system approved?
Sure.
I mean, in prior to you doing the other work?
Um, I mean, the short answer is, I, I, I have a bit of a gun to my head with the insurance company and the bank. I have a year to get reopened. In order to reopen, all I need is to be able to flush a toilet and have water. I don't need to rebuild the deck and, and the wellness center that was there, so I'm, I'm, you know, for me, the more expedited is the septic tank because that's what I need to operate the business. I don't need the other items. But I also, again, going into it, I didn't quite, we, everyone wasn't quite sure which path to take, so we moved things forward as we could. It's been, it's been a bit tough to understand the best way forward, so this is kind of how we moved it. But the short answer is that in order to operate my business, I need a septic tank. I don't need the other items, but I'm hoping to process those as they go through.
Okay. Well, and then, why, why aren't they two included together? I mean, is there a reason why it was cut in half?
We're still working through the APR, and there are still revisions and things like that, um, that would have held up this application.
Okay, and then the only other question I have is, I couldn't find the septic field. Where is it? It used to be under the driveway, but they're removing it, right?
Yep, moving up to the top of the driveway, right off of PCH.
I thought that's where the tanks were.
The tanks and the pits run across, so, uh, again, I don't-
Oh, this is a pit situation, okay.
Yeah, it's a seepage pit.
Okay. I move the, uh, consent, consent to the item.
Second. It's, uh, I think this is a receive and file, so without objection, the chair can receive and file.
Without objection.
Good luck with your work.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, moving along, item 5A.
I think we could come back to B2 if you would like to at this time, or, but I don't, unless it's a problem.
Okay, I move, we move B2 to-
Is, is the applicant here, though? He was told to brought to the end.
Yeah, he's here.
I've got that, and I got a speaker slip from somebody, so.
Okay, I move, we move B2 back to, after 5, B5.
B2 to be held now?
Correct, second.
They're sitting right now.
Yeah.
Right now.
I gotta put it back in the agenda. We moved it. I need a second.
So, the motion is to move it from the end of the agenda to be heard now?
Right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, you're on.
So, basically, um, staff was able to do some additional, uh, confirmation of the status of the plan checks submitted, and, um, I don't know, Jessica wants to provide the update. the plan checks submitted, and I don't know, Jessica wants to provide the update.
According to the building plan check file that Adrian was able to retrieve for us, they received their second set of corrections for pile repair in September. And I believe the applicant has also received some information on his end as well.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Was, was pile repair part of the original CDP?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Is there any other approvals for anything?
I believe that was all that was in the file.
This is not correct. Can I give you some information?
Sure.
The plans were approved from, through plan check in October or November of 2018. The final departmental sign-offs were February of 2019. The reason, and that was delayed due to the Woolsey fire, otherwise it would have been before that time. The original, the original CDP is what we're asking for an extension on now. What happened in the meantime is the owner who's here with me, he, he purchased the property and made some, amended the CDP. And so that was why there was a bit of a delay, because we changed the plans. And that was why it went on for that period of time, there was a lot going on. And so at this point in time now, my understanding is that Craig George has given an approval for an extension of, take the building permit out, and the intention was to start construction in November. That's how it stands now. We are, we have been through plan check and I just expected everything to be on the information available to the commissioners. Didn't expect to come in here and be told that we hadn't done anything.
If I could interject a little bit, I misspoke. The pile repair was permitted, so that, that's good to go. The corrections were for, the second set of corrections were for the remodel of the apartments, the addition and the new rooftop deck and railing.
So is there an ACDP on this project?
There's a CDP.
Yeah, it was a full CDP and, and the, the planning commission also approved an amendment.
Okay. Wouldn't have to ask the questions if I knew.
You'll sit?
I'll, I move, we, whatever.
With staff's recommendation.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. All right, moving along, item 5A. Zone text amendment number 19002, primary view determination, hold within Woolsey fire affected areas. Jessica, you're going to give us a staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, Chair Yearing and members of the commission. The next item on the agenda is the temporary hold on primary view determinations in the Woolsey fire affected areas. I'm going to start the presentation by defining what a primary view or a PVD is. In March of 2012, city council adopted ordinancees 361 and 378 establishing the right for property owners to preserve views of visually impressive scenes of the Pacific Ocean, offshore islands, Santa Monica Mountains, canyons, valleys, and ravines. By applying for a primary view determination or PVD, a property owner may establish a singular primary view location from their residence which they feels best captures one of the visually impressive scenes. City, city staff members then photo document 180-degree span of the primary view. The photographs are then used by staff to assess potential height, size, location issues in regards to pending development applications. In other words, if an application is submitted to the planning department, for example, for a 28-foot tall structure, or the placement of a new grove of street, of trees, staff uses the photographs to try to encourage the development to be relocated or redesigned in order to not block the established views. Staff documents one location from a resident, which, residence which the property owner feels contains the most significant views. Staff then, then takes a series of four to five photographs that represent the 180-degree panoramic picture. Any future development, including landscaping, within 1,000-foot radius of that primary view location is now subject to an analysis of private view impacts. Since the devastation of the Woolsey fire, staff has received several PVD applications, both within and outside of the fire-affected areas, where views of the ocean and mountains have been improved due to the loss of structures and landscaping. If staff were to document the improved views within these areas, it might adversely affect the property owners affected by the fire by limiting the placement and the size of the replacement landscaping. While in some cases, it's evident from performing a site visit that the view has been improved due to the fire, in other cases, due to the steep topography throughout the city is nearly impossible to determine if the view is a result of destroyed landscaping. Pre- and post-fire aerial photography is available to staff and is being used to analyze the existence of building footprints destroyed by the fire. However, they're mostly two-dimensional and do not provide a good representation of height. Basically, we can see that a tree canopy existed prior to the fire, but it doesn't give us any idea of how high that tree was or whether or not that tree, the loss of that tree opened up a new view for the neighboring property. Lastly, many of the destroyed trees were planted prior to the city adopting a landscaping ordinance and therefore landscaping permit history is limited. If we have no record of a tree being planted, then we have no way of determining the impacts of its loss. In May of 2019, staff presented a report on PVDs within the fire-affected areas and resolution 1919 to the city council for consideration. City council adopted the resolution and directed staff to present a resolution to the planning commission. Staff drafted resolution 1941 per council's recommendation and upon further consideration, drafted a second option, option for consideration. Option one is to, was presented to city council and places the temporary hold on PVDs within fire-affected areas. Option two is nonspecific to the Woolsey fire and instead creates a definition of natural disasters, which includes fires, floods, landscapes, and earthquakes. Option two would make it unnecessary to provide the ordinance, or update the ordinance for future natural disasters. Both options provide protections for property owners from having primary views, view corridors established over their properties that would unfairly limit the size and location of future replacement structures or landscaping. Both options amend MMC Section 1745030, the definition section, to include the appropriate definitions, and both add MMC Section 1745150 to address the purpose, the prohibition, and the expiration of the prohibition. Staff has recommended option one only because it reflects the recommendation of council, whether, however, either option would accomplish the council's goals. So in summary, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 1941, option one, approving zone text amendment 19002, amending MMC Section 1745. Upon approval, a public hearing will be scheduled at the city council for their consideration and adoption of the ordinance. And this concludes my presentation.
Jessica, thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah. Two questions.
We've got some speakers, too, so you.
Yeah, yeah, no, these are questions for staff. It's not clear to me why the cutoff date is February 1st, 2019. I didn't understand what that was about.
We did some research after we drafted the ordinance, and that was the first date that we had received a primary view application since the Woolsey fire.
Okay. And then, I, I, I'm just curious what the rationale is on why it's a four-year period to accommodate that? I mean, if we look at growth vegetation, we have a definition of replacement landscaping that refers, and I'm quoting, "to size that maturity as previously existing." And we know that the, these coastal landscapes tend to not mature for 15 years or more, so what's the four, why four years? What does that mean?
Well, the intent is to return to city council, as they directed us, within one year to either ask for an extension on it, give them basically the green light that we still, we're good now, we don't feel like we're getting any more PVD applications in those areas, or to ask for the hold to be extended. However, four years was just kind of a rough estimate as to how long we kind of felt that people would take to be planting their landscaping. It'll give them enough time.
It's not directly linked to, and the size of the regrowth of the vegetation in any way.
No, it, it, and it's actually tied, it, it corresponds with the, the way the rebuild timelines are set up at two years and four years, so that's really more kind of what it was aimed at.
Thanks, that was the backend of my question.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, anybody else?
I'll wait till the comments.
We have two speakers, so I'm going to open up public comment. Christopher, you're up first, followed by Carolyn.
I should say their last name.
Christopher Carradine and Carolyn Carradine.
Yes. Well, we, we're a couple, in case you haven't guessed by now.
I got you.
All right, good evening, thank you for the, taking the time. This will be brief. I just want to speak in favor of the proposal that staff has put before you, that's going to go to city council. I would comment that it seems like it's rather urgent, since the law that's on the books currently allows a primary determination process, unless I'm reading the laws the wrong way. There is no currently, there's no current hold. The two years and the four years, four years is the limit on the entitlement for an as, or an in-kind rebuild. So up to the four-year milestone, which I believe is four years after the November 9th date of the incident, the entitlement for an in-kind rebuild allows you to put back legal non-conforming structures, many of which are quite tall, by the way, mine was quite tall. And I intend to put it back as tall as it was, or slightly below, which Richard knows, he's seen it, right? Where's Richard? Has he gone? Oh, there's Richard, yeah, Richard knows. So we got, we got a PV back in January, just about to get my working drawings finished so I can get them in front of Craig. I think there's, it's an interesting notion that the primary view determination can be used in such a corrupt way by people who are taking advantage of their neighbor's loss. And so I would encourage you to not worry about whether or not there are applications being made within the next year or so, but rather to coordinate the hold with the allowable timeframe for allow, for gaining a permit to rebuild. Now, I know we have to submit within two years for a permit. We can get plan check approval, but then we have up to four years to submit for a building permit. Some of us, myself probably included, are going to be constrained by the economics of the construction industry, because there's going to be a shortage of available trades and resources. And so I'm probably, I'm going to trade, package my project, and I'm going to have to spread it out over time so that I can compete to get my major trades at a rational cost. Because right now, if I go to a GC and I ask for a bid, I'm into money that my insurance company certainly didn't give me. So I would encourage you to go for four years and to get it done as expeditiously as possible because I'm, I guarantee you, there's some smart attorneys downtown who would like to take advantage of the law that's currently on the books. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Actually, I'm surprised, good evening.
Good evening.
Actually, I'm surprised that this even came up. This means that somebody or a group of people, I don't know how many, used the Woolsey fire as an opportunity to get a view that they didn't have before by, taking advantage of their neighbor's loss. And I think it's just astonishing that people are so low that they would do something like this. And we find ourselves in that position of being the ones who lost our home. And we also find ourselves in a position of now, seven months later, not having our permits. This needs to be at least four years, as Chris said, to accommodate the amount of time that's going to take us to get this done. And we're doing everything humanly possible we can to expedite it as much as we can. And he's an architect, we should be, we should have our permits by now, and we don't. And it's not our fault, we've done everything. And the idea that somebody could come in and apply for view protection over our ashes is, is just like the lowest creepiest thing in the world. So this shouldn't even be here. There shouldn't be any need for this. That should, this should go without saying that people can't take advantage of the loss of their neighbors to claim a view that they never had before. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. We live in strange times. Anybody else like to speak? No, we'll bring it back up to the commission table, commissioners? Jeff?
Yeah, I have sort of a question. I, I take it that, well, first of all, let me say that this is not the first time that this has happened. In, after the 93 fire, where there was, the homes in the eastern part of town burned, a lot of people said, "My God, I really didn't realize I had that view," when all the foliage was gone. And so we went through this then, too. I take it that this is driven primarily by landscaping. Is that, is that correct? Is that what's?
That's correct.
Okay, because here's, here's, here's the thing I'm thinking about. You can, as a matter of right, put back what you had before, right? You can put back what you had before plus 10%. If you had a house that was 30 feet tall or 40 feet tall or whatever it was, you can put that back, as long as you put back what you had before. So the view protection, primary view determinations aren't a threat to anybody who's doing any of those things. But what about the case where you had a single family, I mean, a, a single-story home, without regard to whether it was vegetation or not? And they sell it off, they just can't rebuild. And they sell it to somebody who now wants to put in a 28-foot-tall home in a different location, as if it were a completely new development. Why should the neighbors in that situation not be allowed to have a protected views?
I don't think we would be limiting them completely. They still have, we still have neighbors that have the ability to come in, once the story poles go up and review the plans and get a planner out there. They don't necessarily have to have the primary view documented for the development. But it, it is going to kind of be a case-by-case basis.
The, the ordinance also proposes only, the definition of replacement structure and replacement landscaping indicates stuff that was actually damaged or destroyed, so it, it would be limited by those terms to only the structures that are being rebuilt that are approximately the same size as what was there before.
And location.
I, I'm, okay.
The tricky case in your hypothetical might be if the existing house was 12 feet high, and you're now saying the new guy can come in and, by right, gets 18 feet, that that, that difference might make a difference.
Well, and then 18 feet is, is precluded from the view protection ordinance anyway.
Well, but, but what you're doing, I guess, the thing that had me confused is, is the idea that the mechanism by this, this works is suspending the, suspending new primary view determinations, right? Basically putting a hold on them?
Only ones that would impact a replacement structure, replacement landscaping.
Okay.
Can I try to put it another way, though? Because I think the, the angle you're concerned with is that, okay, I've, the property's been sold and a new developer comes in, and then they try to build something new, and they do go on a larger scale than it was before, but no one above them can do a PVD because they're not blocked by this.
They could.
This clause says they can.
Yeah, you could get a primary view determination, as long as it would not impose any limitation on replacement landscape or replacement structure. So if you get a view determination that would prevent a two-story house when there was a one-story before, because they would be replacing that with a structure that's not a replacement structure anymore, because it's not longer in the same size and relative size as the, same relative size and location as the previous location. So you could still get a PVD if someone's proposing to build something bigger.
Or out of their place.
Yeah.
Okay.
The protection would only apply to.
Similar structure.
Yeah, or landscaping.
You done?
Yeah.
I got a bunch.
I have some, too, so.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. I, I, in general, I'm, I'm inclined to go with the option two, to broaden the scope to more, more indifferent disasters than just the fire. But in looking at the language that's written there, I see a lot of problems about interpretation of how that, how you would implement that option two. And so I'd like to just point out a few of those questions and then point, get to sort of a draft hypothetical version of how you might solve some of those, to give you some actual language. To call it a, a natural disaster, when, in, well, let me read the, the death for everybody here, the definition that they have is, "Natural disaster means a natural event, including, but not limited to, fire, flood, landslide, or earthquake that causes great damage or loss of life." That's what, that's what we have in front of us. So my, one issue might be with the word "natural." So this would not cover arson or a terrorist bomb or something started by SCE, for example, because then suddenly there's human agent, agency in that. Is that a natural disaster? The, by analogy, there's sort of a lie, a human liability versus act of God aspect to the question. Secondly, it's, we have it as an event. Well, maybe it could be a series of related events, gradual land subsidence or caused by multiple successive storms that, that made some change. Great damage to whom? Who defines what great is and how? You know, if a windstorm topples one tree, that makes a huge difference to a single owner, but maybe that's not great for, what's the scope of great? So here's some language that maybe we could chew on as we move towards this. How about calling it a disaster, "An event or a series of related events caused by nature or human agency, including, but not limited to, fire, flood, landslide, or earthquake, causing substantial damage to the local environment or to multiple homes or businesses in the community, or resulting in serious injury or loss of life."
Can I comment?
Yeah.
I, first, I think we ought to try to do consensus. I, first, I think we ought to try to do consensus as we go through this.
Go ahead.
But.
I just want to put some things on the table.
Right. And what I'd like to put on the table is simplify that completely. As far as I'm concerned, a disaster is a disaster declared by the city council or by the city manager, whoever declares a disaster, an official disaster. And they did that in the case of the Fi, Woolsey Fire. If it's big enough to be declared a disaster by the city, it's a disaster. And then, we don't have to argue in the past, some, my tree blew down, this, that, and the other thing.
Good point.
And the second thing is, it should be fire-only. Floods go down canyons. They don't, they don't change landscaping a whole lot. They don't change views a whole lot. Windstorms randomly blow down trees, but they don't, it's not a hurricane. It doesn't take every tree down. We haven't had a hurricane ever in Mal, in Malibu, et cetera, et cetera. But we have as fires. And fires take down trees no matter where they are, not the bottom of canyons.
Why doesn't your definition just let the city council decide? A disaster?
Disaster.
Why doesn't that work?
Because we may have a disaster, for example, and I don't know if they declare this a disaster. We got a giant flood and it takes out Malibu Bridge. You can't, and takes out the Topanga Bridge at the same time, and it takes out the Trangus Bridge at the same time. That's a disaster. You can't get out of Malibu. It had nothing to do with, with view determination. And I can't think of anything that would. But there are things that can be a disaster. But I think it should be limited to fire.
You want to call it a view determination disaster, then?
No, I want to call it a fire. I want to call it a fire because.
Which adds impact to view determination.
You're talking, every time we have a disaster, you're shutting everybody down and you have to determine where the disaster was. Well, fire, you can tell where it is. A random tree here and there, you're going to take a thousand feet from every tree that blows down?
An earthquake, though, could, could, you know, knock down an entire house and give you a great new view.
No, no, no.
But they also hit in, in an erratic fashion, so.
Well, you have the right to rebuild a house. We're talking view determination. View determination is, is, you can re, it, it's agnostic to the right of the section that says you can rebuild.
Let's just play a hypothetical. What, what if the, the same kind of crews that came through and it take down all the fire victims' homes said, you know, what if, uh, two, you know, several homes were impacted by an earthquake? There would be a similar process.
We, we're not talking about homes. View determinations are, you get your home. If you already had a home that's over eighteen feet, you get to rebuild it by code. If it was eighteen feet, it's not covered by view determination.
So, your, your statement says only a fire is going to impact foliage. Is that what you, is that where you are?
Yeah, in a general manner. I mean, if you have a tree randomly blow down, are you expecting staff to go all the way through Malibu, put a thousand feet around every tree? And, and, and put a moratorium on view determinations? It doesn't work that way.
What about a natural, you know, bark beetle or something? I don't know. Just throwing it out.
Bark beetles is not a disaster. It goes on for decades. Okay.
I'm just typing, talking hypothetically. I, I don't know that we can think of everything here, John. That's what I'm concerned.
I know, but what happens when you, you can have disasters that do not affect views. If the city declares a disaster, all of a sudden, the staff has got to run around and deal with, gee, does that have anything to do with the house?
So, what if the city declares it a view disaster?
Or says, the city declares it, yeah.
Well, what I want to hear is what el, what other disaster could possibly affect views on a general basis? Not one tree.
Earthquakes, tornadoes, God knows what's going to happen with.
Hurricane if it happened.
Global warming. I don't know. I mean, I don't know what's going on.
Now, number one, anything that happens over a, a long period of time is not a disaster. Otherwise, we're going to, see, this is a time period, they're saying. Here's a disaster. Here's the area it covers, the fire zone. How are you going to do that in any other kind of disaster?
Same way, just by whatever was impacted. Assess it and see.
So, you're going to have, for example, you have a windstorm that blows down a thousand trees. Are you going to have a thousand different zones?
Hypothetically, yeah, I think so.
Well, how the hell are they going to do, deal with that?
They'd be impacted, there'd be red marks on the map.
What, let's, what do you think, Jeff?
Well, I, I see John, John's point and, but I, but I think that, that you, you could, I, I, I agree that, that let's just leave it with disasters and whatever's declared as a disaster is a disaster. But you could modify it by saying a disaster which impacts structure and foliage, if you want. And, and, you know, you pretty much covered it there.
Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
I, I would leave the structure out because it's already covered, but whatever you want to do.
Or maybe more narrowly just. They're both, in fact, covered because it would only affect the ability to get a view determination that would limit something that's either landscaping or a structure that was damaged or destroyed by that natural disaster.
Commissioner Marks?
Yeah, I would think we just say that impacts views, so we don't have to talk about if it's a structure or, you know, foliage.
Generally impacts views. If you have impacts views, how are you going to administer that? Is it every tree, one at a time? Is it a thousand feet from every tree?
Put some language. Let's get some language so we know what we're talking about.
I would say that it's, a disaster is a disaster declared by the city council. Or is it, now, answer me. Is it the city manager? City manager. Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's go to Chris because Kathleen's got to write this down, so I want to make sure we get, we're clear. Go ahead. Finish up. Declared by the city manager.
That generally affects view determinations.
You say generally, substantially, or broadly?
Broadly would be a better word.
Broadly affects view determinations?
Yes.
So, it's a disaster declared by the city manager that broadly affects view determinations. Is that where we are?
And, and we don't have the word "natural" in here.
I want to get your back up. Just, let me give him a sec. No, just for a second. Let these, let's see what we're, how close we get up here, then we'll bring you back. Go ahead.
Anything else, Craig?
You happy with that?
No, no "natural" in there is clear.
No, declared by city manager broadly affecting view determinations. Commissioner Hill? Yes? Please.
Yeah, that's fair.
My wife does the same thing. I understand. Go ahead.
This is only related to the Woolsey Fire.
No, we're trying to broaden it.
We're trying to broaden it. That's what it, we're doing, there's an option two that, that we got that said, as opposed to just letting it to the Woolsey Fire, look down the road and say, if this thing happens again, as opposed to us going back and, and trying to redo it, we'll have a, an ordinance in place that will cover that, because that's what we're trying to do.
But right now, we need this for.
It'll, it'll cover the same.
It'll cover that. It's not yet. We're going to, we're going to cover today and what may happen looking down the line. Anything else, guys?
Okay. No, okay, on that.
I'm not sure that the, does the code use the term "disaster" for what they declare? Or is it a state of emergency?
I think it's a disaster.
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, I'll have to check that.
That would be something.
I think you're right. I think it's the, it's a state of emergency that the city manager declares, and it's not the same as a disaster. And it's a disaster declared by the state of California or the federal government.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's make it whatever is the legal term. You guys pick it, because I think that the FEMA declares natural disasters, but whatever the city manager uses.
You want some local control.
Under state law, but state law delegates her to do, declare something, right?
I think it's state of emergency. We'll, we'll check here.
Okay, we'll use that word, though.
We got to clarify something, though. There, so, no one's going to kind of quote-unquote honor a state of emergency which say impacts a ton of trees, but no homes are lost. There's not going to be a state of emergency declared on a condition like that. So, I, I just. Right.
The term disaster is kind of, is more self-evident, I think.
And it seems like.
Chris, we have to come up with something that is automatic.
How about this? You've got the state of emergency that the city manager can do. You could also, you could say, "or a disaster as declared by the city council."
Well, they can't do that.
No?
They're designated for that.
Well, I, I just don't want to conflate two items. One is that there's loss of life or property, and another that people's views are impacted. They could be different items.
Loss of life and property, if it doesn't affect view determinations, doesn't matter. That's why we put, if it affects view determinations.
But then declared by the city manager. So, we're having this determined by the city manager. We're having this, um, new classification of disaster that would, the city manager would have to call out?
You guys put the word "disaster" when you wrote it. Why'd you do that versus calling it something else?
The term "natural disaster" doesn't currently exist elsewhere in the municipal code, so it was an opportunity to define exactly what we meant and without conflicting with something else.
What I'm trying to get at is whatever Riva did on November eighth.
I think it's a local emergency. I think that's the term.
What, why do we care what Riva did on here?
Because she's the one that's declaring it.
I know.
But it's got to be something else, I think, because this, this isn't necessarily the same beast that would be that one.
Remember, it's a body of law that says city manager has to do X, okay? It's a state law, not our law, okay? So, we have to follow that.
Give me the language, John. Give me language.
The language is exactly what I said with the term in the state law used as disaster or whatever they say it is.
How about, you want to say declared by the city manager?
Whatever she did on November eighth.
Okay, I think it's a.
Or ninth.
Local emergency. I think that's the term here.
Okay. And then, what makes that work is that affects view determination.
So, okay, we're going to call it a national, national, or na, natural emergency?
No, natural.
No.
An emergency.
Declare, well, whatever.
Maybe, maybe we use the term disaster. We say disaster means a local emergency declared by the city manager that broadly affects view determinations?
That sounds good.
That sounds good.
Give me that again.
Disaster means a local emergency declared by the city manager.
As declared by.
That broadly affects view determination.
Right.
And I just want to point out, this could be different from an emergency which is, you know, threatening life.
Yeah, well, it has nothing to do with, if you die, it has nothing to do with your view.
No, that's my point. Okay, so we're on the same side on that.
I'm not so sure of that. I, one, one moment, just let me get.
Bring religion into this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Christopher Carradine again, commissioners, Bonnie, et cetera. I'm sitting here wondering if you guys aren't just sitting up here crafting a lawyer's paradise because you're trying to come up with a very broad policy, which is probably going to take some work and some vetting. In the meantime, you still have a primary view determination regulation on the books, which can be leveraged in the way that I just spoke about it before. So, my suggestion for this evening, take it under advisement, is to get this done specifically for the Woolsey Fire and only for the Woolsey Fire, without having to define it any other way, and then work on the language to get a broader piece that you can plug into the municipal code. And I think that would be fair to those of us who are threatened with primary view determination from neighbors. Thank you.
Well, I think a comment on that is, this is going to go in the municipal code. We don't have anything other than our view determination.
Well, but, but what we're doing is making a recommendation to the city council. And we can make, recommend to the city council that, yes, move this forward with regard to Woolsey Fire. And by the way, see if you can think of something that covers a broader area, too. They're going to make the final determination on it.
Okay, straw poll on Jeff's idea.
I think that's option one, and I think option one is a dumb idea.
Okay, but let's just see what the ta, table says. Commissioner Hill?
Pretty much that, but, but say that we've got some language that we've just pondered that, that they can now move forward with, and we, we, we've created something we can hand off to them to ponder. I don't know how you, how you memorialize that.
Commissioner Marks?
Yeah, I'd say we move fast. Go with option one and advise on option two.
I, I, my experience with city council is that this process is, they come with an ordinance. They pass it to us, we pass it back, and it gets passed the way it gets passed back, okay? Not a suggestion. It doesn't get considered. And what happened in this case, they passed an ordinance, then staff came up with a better idea saying, "Let's make this, if the other side of town burns down, we don't have to reinvent the wheel."
Then have staff come back to us, but let's, I think, let's get it done.
That's what I'm saying. This is getting it done. If you propose this to city council, I personally believe they will understand and staff will explain to them that this is getting it done forever rather than having to go through the whole process again, every fire we have.
And I suspect they're going to have the same conversation up there that we've had down here trying, trying to wordsmith the damn thing, and they'll, they'll be there forever. So, let's make it simple. If, if we want staff to bring back another long-term resolution for us to take a look at, maybe we suggest, that's how it works, so the city council doesn't have to do it. But I think we'll be, we'll be wordsmithing this thing till the council.
Well, I totally disagree. I think we can do this in half an hour.
We just spent forty-five minutes.
Well, we, yeah, but why are you objecting to that definition? If you were on the city council.
John, I'm not objecting to the definition. What I'm, what I'm, I think the, the suggestion that said, "Get it done, all right? So, we'll get the Woolsey Fire people covered, all right? And then, if we want to add some stuff later on, let's do that."
Let me ask you a question, Bonnie. Are you issuing permits now?
Issuing building permits?
No, view determination permits.
Nobody has come in with anything since we've been talking about putting a hold on these, so it's, it's kind of been a natural chilling effect and the way we, yes.
So, no matter what happens, no matter what goes to city council, Woolsey Fire's covered, right?
No.
Well.
Yes.
What, what we could do is take forward option one and then also draft up option two and have it go along with it.
Okay, then I would say, we draft up option two here and say.
Which it sounds like we have.
Planning commission recommends it. You could have option one. We recommend two.
The planning commission recommends.
Or you could, you could recommend option two, but if there can't be agreement to suggest they take option one, limit it to just the Woolsey Fire.
That's, that's what I'm trying to do, is give, give them, they already.
All right, so just, let's just.
I got one more thought. Just, just hear me out. So, if we go with option one and then change the language, it's currently fire victim. It would just say disaster victim, and then it would say, "were damaged or destroyed by," colon, "the Woolsey Fire as of." And then, we'd have the other section say, "affected areas," and we'd say, colon, Woolsey Fire. Then all we've got to do is open this ZTA up each time there's an emergency, and the, the process would be, we make a new ZTA and add, add it to the list.
You pass a whole new law each time there's a fire. That's exactly what you have to do.
That's.
And you lose the period. The next time there's a fire, anybody with half a brain is going to run in and get a view determination before city council can act, which in this case has been seven months.
I, I don't disagree with you. That would ought to be a broader, it ought to be a broader term. But just as a, as a practical matter, the, the members of the city council don't go to the meeting and say, "Oh, my God, what did the planning commission do? I mean, do we, are we, are we going to be bound by their language?" They, they do their own wordsmithing. They'll sit up there and they, and, and, and they're going to make the determination of what, they're going to go through the same debate we're going through here now. So, if we, if we kick it forward to them and say, "We think you ought to do this in a broader language." You know, here, here's some trouble we had in terms of trying to define what a disaster is. They'll get the idea. They, I mean, they're, they're.
Well, that's what we're trying, I'm trying to do, is send our recommendation as option two amended. Now, you have to realize, if they pass option one, the next fire, if I have a view in front of me that's gone, I can walk out and the next day get a view determination. There is no law that covers that.
Would it be, would it be possible to hear back what we just crafted as hypothetical option two?
The definition? Sure.
Yes, yeah.
So, basically, it would change, we use "natural disaster" throughout here. Instead, we're going to just call it "disaster," and then we're going to say, "disaster means a local emergency proclaimed by the city manager that broadly affects view determinations."
So, if we went to the council and said, "Option one, or," and we can now vote if we wanted to say, "or the commission prefers option two, but you can go with either."
Yeah, you could, you could recommend option two, but say, if that's too, if the language is too difficult, you recommend that they push through just for the Woolsey Fire.
Everybody, happened with the language we had, just came up with?
Yeah.
All right?
Yes.
And, okay, so, let's say the language is good. Do we want to recommend option one or option two?
We want to recommend option one, the way it is, and option two, the way we would like it to be.
But.
Which is, which is the, the preference of the commission?
Yeah, I'm one or two. What do we want?
Both.
We'd have to recommend one or the other. I'd rather recommend option two.
I would rather recommend option two also.
Okay.
All right, so that's, we've got a straw poll. That's the.
Okay, now, I want to go on to some other items. Okay? The way landscaping is described, this four-year period, there are certain things that we have a problem with. It's not what was there. It's what's legal, okay?
The definition says legal.
I know, but I want to go on farther. We have a proposal coming to council that is going to theoretically ban certain landscaping, okay, like palm trees, okay? That will be covered by this if they're legal when they apply, correct?
This doesn't, this just talks about the things that could be affected by a view determination. This doesn't, this just talks about the things that could be affected by a view determination. It doesn't give anybody any rights from way or the other about what they can plant or what they can put back. That's governed by other sections of the code.
All this is gonna look at is what legal landscaping existed before, and you can replace it with something. You can't get a view determination that would prevent someone from putting something similar in that location.
Okay, but that's not what I want.
It won't give them any right to, to.
What I want to say is, say for example, city council passes an ordinance that says you can no longer plant eucalyptus trees. You can no longer plant palm trees, okay? That's covered, okay? Not what you had, what you're allowed to have, okay? That's what I would like in this language.
I think it's covering what you're, what you're, the situation.
The way I read it, it's kind of wishy-washy, what you had before.
What, what's saying is, what you had before is sort of an envelope of what kind of landscaping you can replace with. It's not saying that you can go put a palm tree back where there is a palm tree, or in those locations, you can use whatever landscaping.
You can't.
It's, this is only dealing with a view determination, so it's saying you can't get a, you can't get a view determination that would prevent someone from putting similar landscaping in that same envelope where the, where the legal landscaping existed before.
The second part of that question is, it gives you four years for that to grow, okay? There's, most houses, in fact, I would say all, have some kind of plant that grew more than four years, okay? Especially trees. For example, I've got coral trees. They're forty years old, okay? I can't get a, buy a forty-year-old coral tree unless I'm Richard Gott, okay? Because I need, you know, the biggest crane in the world, and et cetera, okay? So we have to somehow deal with what happens, for example, if palm trees aren't outlawed, and you put in a ten-foot palm tree, let's see, that's the most you can afford. Well, it grows to twelve feet, and you've, you, you had a forty-footer there before. Are you gonna cut that tree down in two years when it grows two feet? Because you can't top it.
I think, I see what you're aiming at. You could, you could have changed the expiration date, if that's what you're looking for. You can make it four years for replacement structures and a different date for replacement landscaping.
Well, what I'm, what I would say is, and I don't know if you can do this, I mean, a lot of architects can do stuff that I don't think staff can do. But when you give a landscape permit, you can determine how high the tree's gonna grow. Now, maybe you don't allow trees to grow a hundred feet tall. But you can determine sort of what was there. Can you put in some version that says when they do the view determination, they have to account for the legal landscaping at a twenty maturity or something? And, and you can look up at a table and say, a melaleuca grows to the height of twenty-two feet. And then when you do your view determination, you just go and draw them in. Now, I assume you could do that with CAD CAM. But to, to tell people they can plant a tree that has to be cut down if it grows, it's gonna get tough. And you can't, you can't top a coral tree that's twenty feet tall. You can't top a, a palm tree. It'll die immediately. There's a lot of, so we either have to set our, what's allowed to be planted to where they never grow over a certain height, and I doubt if you can buy anything more than about twenty feet tall. So you could say, everybody who can't plant anything gets over twenty feet tall, or you can adjust it in the view determination. Or you can have an appeal, okay? The person who's getting determined against can maybe come in and say, look at, you let me grow this tree, and it's still growing, and here's a picture of the way my yard used to look. Don't give them that particular spot. Otherwise, ten years from now, we're gonna have a big problem.
I think you have two issues. One is in terms of what type of trees and that you want to allow, and what maximum growth they could have would be something you deal with in terms of that new ordinance you're talking about, in terms of the approvals for it. In terms of, I think you're trying to get credit for people to be able to build, have their trees grow taller. I, I think if you're looking to do that, I mean, the way these view determinations work is you take a picture, and if we're gonna be coloring them in, I think you're gonna have a lot of arguments and, about if it was, you know, properly described or what it is. If you wanna give a longer window for landscaping, you know, eight years, ten years, something like that, but basically.
Means you can't do any view determinations for ten years.
For the landscaping, that would be able to get, you'd be able to get a view determination that would deal with the structure, but the landscaping that would still get, you know, more years to grow it.
Four years from now, most people have only had their plants in for a year or so.
Give me your language, what you, your thinking is.
Well.
In section C, I think, where it would be something that shall expire four years from, instead it would be four years for the structure or the maturity timeframe for landscaping, something like that. You'd have a two-pronged thing, what would say, it would, for structures that shall expire four years from the date of natural disaster, and for landscaping, it would expire, you'd, whatever period you wanna put in there.
What do you think, ten years?
It would vary, be by the what's growing.
Well, I know, but you gotta have a number. You can't say, well, this guy's two, and this one's three, and that one's four. I mean, that'll drive you crazy, because you gotta deal with a thousand feet.
And if it's not exactly perfect, I mean, you'd still.
Does that sound reasonable? I, I don't know how to deal with it, unless they ban all trees that grow over a certain height. But I think most people, we've got four hundred and thirty lots, and we only have a hundred and fifty applications, okay? So we know four years from now, people are still gonna be planting stuff.
I just wanna call something out, maybe back to Jessica on this. You, you guys use like GIS, those overlays of old images, or Google Earth, Google Earth, those images as well in your.
Yeah, we have several different software packages we use.
Okay, um, there's 3D renderings also that do a pretty good job of estimating tree height. So if you can investigate some of those, could you use those in your determination?
If we could find one that did a good job, we, that's one of our, our downfalls right now, is just getting the 3D one. I mean, you can use Google Earth, but everything just ends up getting squished and compacted.
Because Google Earth VR will let you see that, and it does a pretty good job of estimating tree height, at least if you could try to incorporate that to your findings. It, I don't know if they have historical 3D files, but they have current files, something that might help. No, it would, because it would show you, it, it shows you what the height of the tree was at the time. You know, that might be, it's just like a flat image, it's just.
Yeah, but we can't, technology changes, so we have to specify. Maybe there's an appeal.
All I'm saying is, that's a tool that could be used.
That could be used to determine what was existing before.
Uses technology to help solve the problem.
Right.
Right, and I'm saying we're making an ordinance, and tech, we could say uses technology, but we, we'd be better off saying, as determined by the planning department.
Exactly. My point is that Jessica would have more tools for their discretion.
But is, is it practical at all to have the homeowner, just like they can, they can get a view restoration on the day they bought the property, if they have the records? Now, is, would it be that maybe the person getting determined can appeal a determination if they can prove that they had more?
I think it would be something which, to the discretion of staff, they could bring up this as evidence to say to the appellant and the applicant, hey, this is what was happening in November early of 2018, and that's what they have the right to. And they'd have something to represent that.
Yeah, but they have to make a determination at the time the person pays the two hundred and fifty bucks.
Which this would allow, I think, if, if I'm understanding it right.
Would that be practical? That's what I'm asking Bonnie and Jessica. It's either that, well, I, I think we're better off saying ten years from, the growth of ten years, and then if it.
Then everybody knows how long they have.
How long, they, they get some lot of fertilizer out there.
Commissioner Hill, what do you think?
I, I just think maybe there's a way to put an or in there, say, ten years or as defined, as determined by staff with current technology.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's fine with me.
You okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Jennings? Let's do it.
Okay, now, along with landscaping, one of the biggest problems in Malibu, as far as I'm concerned, as far as fire goes, because I saw two houses burned down because of this, is illegal side yard and front yard hedges. Now, these are illegal, can't be over six feet or forty-two inches. I see probably average of two, three hundred ficus trees a day coming into Point Dune. None of them are six feet. So I would like to exclude the ability to block views with side yard fences, with side yard, non-legal landscaping. Now, is that blocked now, the way it's written, or not? Because if I wanna block my neighbor out, all I gotta do is put up a twelve-foot ficus fence that I can have that in tomorrow.
You would only have the rights as pertains to legally existing landscaping that was damaged or destroyed by the str, by the, by the disaster.
Okay. Do we have a problem with calling a, a nine-foot ficus fence legal?
There are some, there are some ficus fences that have existed prior to the ordinance that would be grandfathered, that were already quite tall.
I would doubt that personally.
Well, I, I have a ficus that's been growing forty years, so I don't know.
But that is, that's, as far as most people are concerned, that's most of the view blockage.
Commissioner Maza, I am a little concerned that this is, we're trying to solve one particular problem here, and we're gonna have an ordinance coming back fairly soon that deals with, you know, landscaping that's, you know, could be newly prohibited, fire resilient landscaping, things like that, and I think it would be a better time to deal with that.
Well, the only reason I, I would disagree with you is, there is a stated, if you ask anybody, there's no compliance, no city compliance effort on ficus, ficus fences. In fact, every house I know of on Point Dune, we've approved that has banned them, has had one within six months.
Yeah, there's some benefit of, of having this thing come back. If we're gonna do landscaping, this, because the people in the audience understand landscaping, and we can ask them questions and maybe get better definitions of what the hell we're trying to do.
That's future, that's only when you go in for a permit. If you wanna cheat, go ahead. And that's our problem. You no longer can see the mountains from Point Dune, on almost any street.
But, but this is a, this is a different problem. This is a problem of, of one of your concerns about enforcement. What we're trying to do here is to allow those who got burned out to restore what they had before. If there's going to be adjustments to that down the road for some other aspect, then let's do it separately, but, but this is.
I understand that. If somebody had a CDP after, has a CDP on the house that burned down, pretty much by definition, we've always had the six-foot and forty-two-inch in our codes. Will you count that as replaceable under the view ordinance, even though it was put in illegally?
We do the best research we can do to determine what was legal and what wasn't, and landscaping's a tricky one, but.
I understand that, but not side yard fences aren't tricky.
Well, I mean, I, what I mean is, we don't know when something was put in. If we can determine that, then that helps establish whether something was lawful or not, based on, you know, if it was during cityhood, then we know it was subject to a six-foot height limitation. If it preceded cityhood, then it's less certain about that.
Okay, so for two hundred and fifty bucks or whatever they pay for their view determination, you're gonna do that research?
I was gonna say, that's, yeah. Anybody wanna pursue John's program now, or bring it back? Commissioner Hill?
I think that should come back in the context of the landscaping stuff.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yeah, with landscaping.
Okay.
Okay, so how does it read now?
Okay, so the, the, the two changes then that you're proposing to option two would be changing it from natural disaster to disaster, and defining disaster, saying disaster means a local emergency proclaimed by city manager that broadly affects view determinations. And then for seventeen four five point one five oh C, I think this would capture what you're looking for. Expiration prohibition, and we'd say, a temporary prohibition imposed by section seventeen point four five point one five oh B shall expire, colon, then make two subcategories. The first one would be, one, for PVDs that would limit replacement structures four years from the date of the natural disaster that created the disaster area at issue. And two, for PVDs that would limit replacement landscaping, ten years from the date of the natural disaster that created the disaster area at issue.
Or.
Yeah.
Or as determined by staff, something.
Yeah, or something like, or evidence, or based on evidence provided by staff or applicant?
Staff analysis.
Well, this is extending the limitation period. Are you saying staff could extend the tenure period for up to five more years if, if sufficient evidence is demonstrated?
Yes.
Okay, can we, I would like to make one other change.
Well, first of all, is that language, or are you telling me we can change to this section we're talking about?
Except for one word.
Go ahead, what's the word?
Well, in our replacement language, replacement landscaping on page three or four, it says previous landscaping. I'd like to add the word legally permitted.
It, it's already there.
Where does it say that?
Existing legal landscaping.
Well, what I'm reading is, replacement landscaping means proposed landscaping cited in the same location on the same relative size and maturity as previous landscaping damaged and destroyed by the Woolsey fire.
Previously existing legal landscaping.
You're, on, it's option two that has the word legal in it.
Yeah.
Okay, this is option one?
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Let me give this young lady, give us your name.
Nicola Dill. I have a quick question, just a clarification regards to what Mr. Maza brought up about the hedges or fences being part of the PVD. We have an issue with that on our property, and as far as the city is concerned, so far it was always said that those hedges don't fall under the PVD. It's all code. And it's not regulated by the PVD. We've worked with Jessica on that, and we've complained about a hedge that goes over our PVD, and it's been denied the complaint usually, because it's a code issue, and we have to file pro complaint. So I would like the clarification on that.
I don't remember which address is yours.
Sixty Gala Head.
Oh, okay, you have a side yard, your neighbor has a side yard fence at six feet, and they had a six-foot tall hedge that they had planted previously. I believe that they had landscaping approvals for that, I'm not sure, but.
I don't understand how they got it, because they never turned the hedge.
Well, to sort of answer that question, comes down to what I was talking about, it's compliance. We do have a code that says you cannot have more than six feet.
Well, I mean, this is an example of something that should be turned into code enforcement, and code enforcement will follow up on, on that address. But we can't, I mean, if, we can't, if it can't be seen from the street or whatever, we, you know, code enforcement can't investigate. So that's why it's important that some, that a property owner call, contact code enforcement.
Have you done that, ma'am, miss?
And I'd be happy to talk with you separately after the hearing and try to resolve your particular issue. I'm not sure that we can do it right here.
Yeah, because it's confusing what now is discussed about being primary view a hedge or not. And that has to be clear, if it's primary view, and you're still, it wasn't signed off, by the way, the landscape plan before, and you signed it off without doing anything, so.
Let's do this. If, if you would maybe contact Bonnie or give her your name, and let's.
We have tried, they haven't answered our emails, so.
I don't recall a particular case, but I'll be happy to talk with you after the meeting.
Do us a favor, contact her, and if you don't get a response back, come back and tell us.
Yeah, or you can contact Doug Clevinger in code enforcement.
Okay, uh, have we got this thing wrapped yet?
Can I give you a language, that language to add?
Yeah, and get us a, Jessica's got it, I mean, Catherine's got it.
Okay, so, um, we talked about the changes to seventeen four five one five oh C. The first one was a limitation, kept it four years for structures, and the second year was ten years for the landscaping. And then to add on, to address what you guys were talking about, we would add on at the end of that sentence, which can be extended up to five years if staff determines it is necessary for replacement landscaping to fully regrow. Would that fit what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Anybody happy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I move what we just did.
Second.
So that's.
And, and I would, I would ask, I would ask how the staff report will be written. Will it say, planning commission recommends this, but you can pass that, or?
Well, first of all, let me clarify, so your motion is to. Well, first of all, let me clarify, so your motion is to move, is to adopt option two, which is Resolution 19-41, which is broader than just Woolsey specific, with the changes to the definition of disaster, and the changes to section 17.45.150C that I previously read. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that is.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
site plan review number 14056, minor mod 14017, and lot merger 14001.
All right, we got a...
Is our motion a second?
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
All right.
Can we have a break?
Who was the second?
I second.
27136, Sea Vista Drive.
Okay, perfect.
Can we have a break?
Adrian Urhan.
Man who's been talking, I want some break now.
Thank you, good evening, Chair, Euring, and members of the planning commission.
All right.
The next item is a project that has been previously scheduled for planning commission meeting,
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, 8:50.
but was continued a couple times to allow the applicant additional time to revise the project. One of the neighbors had some concerns about the location of the second floor from their dining room area, and even though the primary determination that was done for that property protected the view from the deck on the ground level, the applicant chose to redesign the second floor, or the upper level, and they pushed that closer to Sea Level Drive, excuse me, Sea Vista Drive. And in doing so, it helped the primary, or the view of the ocean from the dining room area. The subject property consists of two adjoining parcels located on the south side of Sea Vista Drive in the Sycamore Park neighborhood, which is a largely built-out private residential neighborhood. The subject property consists of the combined land of two parcels. Neither of the two have been previously developed, however, they have been disturbed in order to allow a number of failed attempts to restore a historical landslide that is still remains on the property. The first restoration on the project, on the property, dates back to 1928, based on historical aerial photos. The project consists of a lot merger that will permanently eliminate the property boundary dividing these two parcels, and will create one big legal lot. The proposed project also includes the construction of a new single-family residence, a detached art studio, swimming pool, and associated development. The proposed septic system includes a tank that's underneath the driveway, and it also includes a geoflow dispersal system, which allows the treated effluent to be slowly introduced into the ground, where the effluent will evaporate or will be absorbed by the overlying vegetation in a process called evapilatranspiration. The geoflow dispersal system uses the flat portion of the property, which is the portion between the development and Sea Vista Drive, as well as the area just to the west of the proposed development. For the system to properly function, it must be on a flat surface to minimize its potential for lateral migration of the effluent. The residence requires a minor modification to reduce the required front yard setback from the required 40 feet 10 inches to the proposed 22 feet 7 inches. However, as demonstrated in the staff report, many other residents on the same street have similar front yard setbacks as was being proposed for this project. As mentioned previously, this property contains a historical landslide and has been disturbed several times in order to make an attempt to stabilize that landslide since the 20s. Given past failed attempts to restore the side slopes steeper than 30%, do exist on the property where development is proposed. Therefore, the hillside residential development standards apply to the project. Hillside residential standards require that a 25% reduction to the maximum allowable total development score footage, or TDSF, is required. As a result, the property owner is requesting a variance to exceed the maximum allowable TDSF based on hillside standards, but they would still be in compliance should hillside standards not apply. Also, the applicant is including a lot merger. The proposed TDSF is less than the sum of each lot, if each lot was calculated separately and hillside standards applied. The applicant also presented prospective appraisals for the proposed residential size versus one without the proposed variance, and an error explaining that the proposed variance is required for economic feasibility of the property, particularly due to the high cost of construction to mitigate the existing landslide. The variance is requested because of the property's historic landslide and degradation from corrective grading, which makes the proposed development subject to hillside standards, and the proposed lot merger further reduces the maximum allowable total development score footage. The, as demonstrated in this perspective drawing, the proposed house and art studio will have a single-story appearance even through the residence's upper level, which is above the garage and directly in front of Sea Vista Drive. The proposed garage is semi-subterranean and with a side access. So, it's allowed to be mostly hidden from view from Sea Vista Drive. The main, the remaining portion of the residence cascades down the slope, and from a line of sight perspective, the upper level will be mostly obstructed by the lower level as seen from Pacific Coast Highway. As the geoflow dispersal system for the septic system takes advantage of the property flattest area, the proposed residential development is cited on slopes steeper than 2.5 to 1, which is, there's a sliver across the mid-portion of the property with these slopes. Therefore, a variance is requested for construction on these steep slopes, which are subject to a historical landslide and failed attempts to restore it. Here are some photographs of the proposed development from various angles, some taken from Sea Vista, and some taken from PCH. As seen from the photographs, the proposed residence and art studio are mostly 18 feet, as measured from existing grade, they're building into the hillside, and in doing so, they're minimizing the height of the proposed residence from existing grade. The only portion above 18 feet from existing grade is a very small rear portion of the upper level, and this is only after the applicant chose to move that portion closer to Sea Vista in order to accommodate the views of the immediate neighbor to the east. After the agenda item was published, the applicant uncovered a few errors in the conditions of approval. The, for example, condition number seven indicates a conditional COC or certificate of compliance. However, in this case, the document will not be a conditional, as one is not required for a lot merger. And it's just one document that will be required to be recorded, therefore, the word documents is plural. The letter S would have to be removed. Condition number eight is a duplicate of the condition above. However, it has specific information, doesn't actually...
Slide B, coastal development permit number 14079. Variance is number 14058, 17025. Site plan review number 14056, minor mod 14017, and lot merger 14001. 27136, Sea Vista Drive. Adrian Urhan.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, Euring, the members of the planning commission. The next item is a project that has been previously scheduled for planning commission meeting but was continued a couple times to allow the applicant additional time to revise the project. One of the neighbors had some concerns about the location of the second floor from their dining room area, and even though the prior determination that was done for that property protected the view from the deck on the ground level, the applicant chose to redesign the second floor or the upper level, and they pushed that closer to Sea Level Drive, excuse me, Sea Vista Drive. And in doing so, it helped the primary or the view of the ocean from the dining room The subject property consisted of two adjoining parcels located on the south side of Sea Vista Drive in the Sycamore Park neighborhood, which is a largely built-out private residential The subject property consists of the combined land of two parcels. Neither of the two have been previously developed, however, they have been disturbed in order to allow a number of failed attempts to restore a historical landslide that is still remains on the property. The first restoration on the project on the property dates back to 1928 based on historical aerial photos. The project consists of a lot merger that will permanently eliminate the property boundary dividing these two parcels and will create one big legal lot. The proposed project also includes the construction of a new single-family residence, a detached art studio, swimming pool, and associated development. The proposed septic system includes a tank that's underneath the driveway, and it also includes a geoflow dispersal system which allows the treated effluent to be slowly introduced into the ground where the effluent will evaporate or will be absorbed by the overlying vegetation in a process called evapotranspiration. The geoflow dispersal system uses the flat portion of the property, which is the portion between the development and Sea Vista Drive as well as the area just to the west of the proposed development. For the system to properly function, it must be on a flat surface to minimize its potential for lateral migration of the effluent. The residence requires a minor modification to reduce the required front yard setback from the required 40 feet 10 inches to the proposed 22 feet 7 inches. However, as demonstrated in the staff report, many other residents on the same street have similar front yard setbacks as what's being proposed for this project. As mentioned previously, this property contains a historical landslide and has been disturbed several times in order to make an attempt to stabilize that landslide since the 20s. Given past failed attempts to restore the side slopes steeper than 30%, do exist on the property where development is proposed. Therefore, the hillside residential development standards apply to the project. Hillside residential standards require that a 25% reduction to the maximum allowable total development square footage, or TDSF, is required. As a result, the property owner is requesting a variance to exceed the maximum allowable TDSF based on hillside standards, but they would still be in compliance should hillside standards not apply. Also, the applicant is including a lot merger. The proposed TDSF is less than the sum of each lot if each lot was calculated separately and hillside standards applied. The applicant also presented prospective appraisals for the proposed residential size versus one without the proposed variance and an error explaining that the proposed variance is required for economic feasibility of the property, particularly due to the high cost of construction to mitigate the existing landslide. The variance is requested because of the property's historic landslide and degradation from corrective grading, which makes the proposed development subject to hillside standards, and the proposed lot merger further reduces the maximum allowable total development square footage. As demonstrated in this perspective drawing, the proposed house and art studio will have a single-story appearance even through the residence's upper level, which is above the garage and directly in front of Sea Vista Drive. The proposed garage is semi-subterranean and with a side axis, so it's allowed to be mostly hidden from view from Sea Vista Drive. The remaining portion of the resident cascades down the slope, and from a line-of-side perspective, the upper level will be mostly obstructed by the lower level as seen from Pacific Coast Highway. As the geoflow dispersal system for the septic system takes advantage of the property flattest area, the proposed residential development is sited on slopes steeper than 2.5 to 1, which is, there's a sliver across the mid-portion of the property with these slopes. Therefore, variance is requested for construction on these steep slopes, which are subject to a historical landslide and failed attempts to restore it. Here are some photographs of the proposed development from various angles, some taken from Sea Vista and some taken from PCH. As seen from the photographs, the proposed residence and art studio are mostly 18 feet as measured from existing grade. They're building into the hillside, and in doing so, they're minimizing the height of the proposed residence from existing grade. The only portion above 18 feet from existing grade is a very small rear portion of the upper level, and this is only after the applicant chose to move that portion closer to Sea Vista in order to accommodate the views of the immediate neighbor to the east. After the agenda item was published, the applicant uncovered a few errors in the conditions of approval. For example, condition number seven indicates a conditional CFC or certificate of compliance. However, in this case, the document will not be a conditional as one is not required for a lot merger, and it's just one document that will be required to be recorded, therefore the word "documents" is plural. The letter "S" would have to be removed. Condition number eight is a duplicate of the condition above. However, it has specific information, doesn't actually relate to this project, so staff recommends that this condition be entirely removed from the resolution. Condition 13 relates to administrative CDPs, which this is not an administrative CDP, but in fact it's a full CDP, so staff recommends that also this condition be entirely removed. Condition number 41 relates to projects that either impact ESHA or immediately adjacent to ESHA. And in this case, there is no immediate ESHA around the subject properties. This condition is not required. There is a condition in the resolution, which is condition number 60, and it's a similar condition, however, it's based on the actual language in the code that, you know, does prohibit any grading within ESHA or adjacent to ESHA or slopes steeper than 4 to 1. In this case, obviously, there are slopes that are steeper than 4 to 1, so that condition is more applicable to this project. And so again, this condition 41 is recommended to be entirely removed. And condition number 49 incorrectly states that the native draw tolerant species is required within the irrigated zone A, and instead, the only area where non-native plants is permitted is zone A, and then non-native plants is required for all other areas of the fuel modification. Staff recommends that the planning commission, adopted planning commission resolution number 19-22 approving the proposed project with the amendments to the conditions of approval as just stated. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, disclosures.
I met with Chris Delo, the applicant's representative, one of the applicant's representatives last week, and again with Don Schmitz today. Discussion centered largely around the request for variance from the reduction in total development square footage required by the hillside management ordinance. Also, the only fact that, it's in the staff report, but it's not really emphasized, was the fact that the microdosing system was one that was required by Christine, and that's the reason why the structure was pushed in the direction it was pushed. Apart from that, there was nothing not on the staff report.
Mr. Hill?
I visited this item and drove around the neighborhood up above and noticed there are a number of houses that don't have much blue water view, but this would, in many cases, block their remaining blue water view. So it's not just the several houses next to it, but the way Escondido's shapes are like a bowl or like a theater, there are houses all kind of looking down, and this is basically right in the front row or at the front of the stage, as it were.
Mr. Mazza?
Yeah, I briefly talked with Don Schmitz after a city council meeting, I think it was. I don't think it was...
Business roundtable?
It was what?
Business roundtable?
I don't know. One of those meetings about it. Didn't learn anything that was in the staff report. I'm supposed to be a good guy. And in 1979, I investigated purchasing these properties and was warned off by my architect because of the geology. I don't remember much about that, but I know it was '79.
Mr. Mark?
I visited the property also. Did you get a chance to take a visit from the neighboring property to kind of see how the views were impacted? It looked like there was some good kind of discussions with the current, you know, the applicant and that owner. So otherwise, you know, gave me good perspective on the property but didn't learn anything new.
I also had a meeting with Don Schmitz, covered mostly the same stuff that Jeff Jennings mentioned, and that's about it. Any questions with staff before we go? Don? I've got one. You know, can you put up a picture someplace and show me where the soldier piles are going on that piece of property?
I have that.
It's in here. I haven't seen it. It's in the presentation?
Yeah, it doesn't show up on this exhibit. Let me see if on the staff report.
Okay, on page four of 35 of the staff report, there's a statement that says the project geotechnical engineers recommending a restricted use area for the area south of the proposed soldier stabilization piles. Can you show me where that restricted area is? Adrian, Don says he's got it in his packet, so why don't we let him go first?
Appreciate that, yes.
Just check it and make sure he's right. Okay?
Well, I've got one other question of Adrian.
I do too. Go ahead, John.
Adrian, is, did Christine restrict the microdosing to that one area? Or it seems to me you can microdose about anywhere since it's .15 gallons per day.
We can talk to Christine. Again, there was a recommendation that this would be the best location for it, given that fact that it was flat and that the... Chris is actually here, we can actually...
I'd like to ask him. I mean, the reason, Chris, the reason I'm asking is, of course, that's also the best place to build it since it's not on a landslide.
You know, we worked extensively, city geotechnical staff, with Jake and the Cal West, the geotechnical consultants, and it was determined that it was best to put the evapotransformation system behind the soldier pile stabilization system. So that meant to move it as far landward and up on the northern, northwestern portion of the property as possible to keep it stabilized behind that factor of safety line that we required.
Well, my question...
My question really is, if that area didn't exist, could it go in front of the soldier piles?
It could have, but we would have, no, we would have required the dosing system to be behind the stabilization system wherever that may have been.
Okay. And there's, in his presentation...
Do your microphone, please. Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry. In his presentation, he's got a drawing of all the soldier piles because the Caltrans is putting them in too. Where is it?
There's a mislabel on that, John.
Yes. I don't know if he has a copy, but it, the whole highway has soldier piles running all the way along it.
It's a mistake. It's mislabeling.
The blue ones are not faults.
They're what?
False. Mislabeling.
They're not soldier piles, they're faults, little round things?
The blue ones on the exhibit, yeah.
So what is...
All the others are a fact. Well, Don can do his presentation unless you've got another question.
Well, it's going to be a Chris's, but whatever, I can come back to Chris.
Yeah, I have some geology questions, too.
Chris will be here.
Okay, we'll come back to you.
Yeah, just some quick housekeeping questions on the geology. There was a, the geotech report wanted a further geologic, geotechnical study.
The geotech report wanted further geological, geotechnical study. Is that something that's been done yet? Or that's just, we're assuming we don't have that and we can proceed without it?
Do you have where that's referenced in any of the documents?
Well, I can quote the line and maybe you could pull it out. Significant grading, construction of structures, or irrigation shall not be permitted in the established restricted use area without further geologic...
Page four of 35 at the top, second paragraph.
Thank you. Yeah.
What? 435, right, second paragraph.
I'm asking because I see a lot of what seems to me sort of fuzzy stuff about, given the history of the slide and how mutable the situ, how, I guess that's a reasonable word, the situation still seems to be, and I don't feel, so I just want to see if we've crossed all the Ts and dotted the Is.
Yes, the, right now, the geotechnical consultants have recommended that no structures be allowed within that restricted use area. So if there were any structures that were going to be proposed, we would need additional geotechnical studies to either demonstrate that those structures meet the required factors of safety that are required by our guidelines on our minimum standards, and if not, then they could not be put there. But I think Jake maybe could, the project geologist can maybe elaborate on some of his restrictions in that restricted use area, if you'd like.
And there was also, the geotech report also refers to a map not being provided. Please provide the requested map for city review. Was that in fact provided?
That's a condition of Plan Sec that we'll look once all the structural plans are generated. So that's the next phase after...
Okay, I think I have some other additional deeper issues, but we'll hear from them first.
Anything for, anything before we go?
I think it'll come up mainly in response to the presentation.
All right, let me open up the public comment. Don Schmitz, the applicant.
Point of order, Chair Euring, before I get started, do you, I had Mr. Holt fill out a speaker slip to answer questions. Do you have any other speaker slips perhaps in opposition?
I don't know if they're in opposition or not, but I've got two, let me see. I've got Norm Haney and I've got Leon Johnson.
Okay, well, I have to assume that Mr. Johnson has concerns, so if you would put me in at, say, 11 minutes, and I'll retain four minutes for rebuttal. So commissioners, good evening. Again, Don Schmitz, on behalf of the applicant, I appreciate your time and attention. We've been working on this project for four years. A lot of thought has gone into it. Your staff has done an unusual, comprehensive job to explain this to you. You know where it is. You know that these lots are legal lots, that they have unconditional certificates of compliance from the city of Malibu, and that's our starting point. We are proposing a lot merger to create one larger lot. We think it makes sense from a land use planning standpoint to do that. The project layout is in your staff report, was addressed in part by staff. It's a 5,468-square-foot single-family residence with a garage and a detached 670-square-foot art studio. It has a 1,200-square-foot basement. The lower level is 1,121 square foot. The main level is 3,796 square feet, and then the upper level moved towards the back is 1,000 square foot. It's important when you look at these floor plans, you recognize that it is a flowing design, it's not a monolithic, in-your-face, large house. And in fact, when you look at the north elevations, as was touched on by your staff, the tallest elevation from the bottom of an excavation is 21 feet, and then it ranges from 11 feet to 14-foot and on up. And this is the story poles that you've seen out there from Sea Vista. This is, you can see how it steps away and it fades down and follows the topography, which is really what we're looking for here. And this is the north elevation of the residence. If you look to the left-hand side, the garage is actually, the driveway is graded in and the garage is hidden, and this is why the house appears to be 18-foot tall from Sea Vista. It's also important to note that the project, and this goes towards the creativity of the design by Burge, there's only like 280 cubic yards of grading for this project. The south elevation's very important at its tall spot, it's 20.75 foot. It's shaded as it fades back away from the point of view from Pacific Coast Highway. We try to be very sensitive to a design which protected the public view shed along Pacific Coast Highway. Our neighbor's house, as you can see to the left, is much taller and much more visible than the design that was proposed here. The east elevation, which is the one adjacent to the Johnsons, is 13, 11, 14-foot in height. Again, it really flows with the land and the topography, and this is the elevation looking towards the east northeast. You can see the Johnsons' house in the background, and you can see how the house is, again, designed to flow down and follow the topography. This is the original point cloud, and what that means is a computer graphic that shows 18-foot following the topography religiously, and if you look carefully, you can see that one little spot right here that was taller than 18-foot from the existing natural grade. And pursuant to the redesign, we did to try and assuage the concerns of the Johnsons, the new design literally has no portion of the structure which is over 18 feet above that point cloud. So we comply with everything in the zoning code. We are asking for the two variances. We believe that they're justified. I do not do these things frivolously, and the reason we need these is because of the constraints on the property, and that's for the steeper slopes and the variance for the 25% reduction on the TDS. We have geo-soil, steep slopes, and a geoflow area. These are all constraints for us. So here's the subject property. You have the Escondido Beach landslide. You have the mislabeled faults, which are not soldier piles, and my apologies for that, commissioners and general public. You have the soldier piles for the Johnson residence, which is right next door. There is five hydroggers which are located out there. Where you are proposing, oh, excuse me, this is the Caltrans remedial grading that was done on the subject property. They've done keyways, and they're proposing to do tiebacks in this area, and a pilot road was graded across the property. It was significantly altered, as you can see in this photograph from 1994, which is a little blurry, but in the 2006, you can see where there was remediation work that occurred over in here in a road, and there's been a lot of grading on this property. It's highly disturbed with manufactured slopes. That's the northern limits of the landslide. You can see the neighbors' piles, and there you can see the proposed soldier piles that we're going to be having on the subject property and the exact location of them. There's a lot, and they're big. They're really big. There's close to 50 of them. The exhibit that you have here in front of you, this is not one of the biggest ones. This is 48 inches. We have something like 14 of them that will be 60 inches. I asked Mr. Smith to create an exhibit for you for that, but he told me he couldn't put that into the truck. It's going to be, these are going to be 80 feet deep. Now, just for reference, 80-foot is basically from that far wall across over to that wall. Weighs thousands and thousands of pounds per linear foot. These are massive, massive foundations. Sometimes you'll see foundations like this on Malibu Road and places like that, but you do not see them typically on inland properties. This is going to cost $1.55 million to do this foundation, to build this home. Whatever size the home is, we can't get out of that. Now, we've done the cost of construction, and it's in here, and I don't want to run out of time. It's in the handout, but you've got your vertical costs, which is the cost to build a house, the horizontal costs when the deepened foundations, which is static, as is the septic systems and things of that nature. So you're going to be, for the 7,100-square-foot house that we're proposing, we're going to be into it for $5.274 million. For the 5,300-square-foot house, which would be the 25% penalty for hillside management, we'd be $4.469 million. The 7,100-square-foot residence would appraise out at about $7 million. The 5,200-square-foot residence, which is the 25% reduction which we're asking for relief from, would appraise out at $4.5 million, and these are subject to a very accurate appraisal that was submitted to your staff. If you ask the property owner to do the 25% reduction, they will have a net loss, they will be underwater at $1.226 million. That's a very difficult position for them to find themselves when they are trying to mitigate specific issues which are raised by the city in regards to their design criteria. We are also asking for the variance in regards to the steeper slopes. I think that this is pretty self-evident in regards to the needs for this. You can see on the slope map, it's highlighted here, that the house is pushed down and has to go over those steeper slopes, and those steeper slopes, by the way, are manufactured slopes from all the disturbance over the year, people out there bulldozers trying to fix that landslide. We want to meet the yard setback. We don't want to have something which is looming over Sea Vista and is inappropriate. Also, the geoflow field area, which, yes, we were told quite unequivocally, had to be on that flatter part of the property. We agree with you. We'd love to be building a house there, but the geoflow... love to be building a house there. But the geo-flow, it has to be on the flatter portions of the property. Otherwise, you'll get daylighting of the effluent. Additionally, if we moved it down slope, it would be destabilizing to the landslide, according to the consulting geologists and the city geologists. So we are asking for a variance for the development on the steeper slopes. And the findings are in the staff report, and they specify that for the system to function properly, it must be on the flat surface to minimize the potential for daylighting effluent. And the slope area from the landslide affects the subject parcels, but it's really important that when there's a variance, it does not constitute a special privilege or a favor. And we are, in fact, building this home, as the staff report articulates, seaward, about the same distance that everybody else has on both sides of us. So we're not asking to go any further over steeper slopes than the other development, which is in the area. And this is the quote from Land Faces, that there's no other area within the subject property where the dosing field could be located. So there's the two single-family residence option. And commissioners, I want to be real clear about something. I'm not putting this out there as a threat. Approve our project, or by gosh, we'll go out and we'll build two homes. But it is to show that what we are proposing is, in fact, appropriate, that we're taking everything into account. We're merging it. We're doing one house. And that one house is 6,986 square foot. But the two homes on the individual lots, with the 25% reduction, would have a total amount of TDSF at 7,135 square foot. They would be completely compliant with the 25% reduction, but it would be more TDSF. And I'd also point out to you, when you look at these side by side, they would be much more impactful in regards to-- we've got this house setback 125 feet from Pacific Coast Highway. But because we'd have to loop the driveway down and locate the westerly house below the geo-flow field, we'd be closer to Pacific Coast Highway. And there would be more grading. There'd be more of everything. So we do think that this is, in fact, an appropriate request to the planning commission. It's one house. We are asking for relief from the 25% reduction, but still well within the TDSF calculations for the one-acre merged lot. So we're not looking to go crazy with this. We're not saying we need to spend a million and a half dollars on the foundation and give us a 10,000-square-foot house or something like that. We're within the TDSF calculations if you grant us relief from the 25% hillside management reduction. And then, of course, also, as it pertains to the variance request for the development on the steeper slopes, as you can see, because of the geo-flow constraint and the way that the property lays out, it's inevitable, whether it be the one-house or the two-house scenario, that that development is going to have to occur on a couple sliver manufactured slopes, which are steeper than two and a half to one. So we are asking for relief as it pertains to the 25% reduction. I'm running out of time. I think I will wrap it up with those two TDSF scenarios, and I will retain the remainder of my time for any necessary rebuttal. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Don. Next up is Mr. Johnson. Leon Johnson, right?
Yeah. And so that is our home that you've seen up there. So it's Leon and my wife, Leah Johnson. We do live next door. And I really appreciate Don Schmidt coming out to our house. And he brought the architect with him. And we looked over everything. What he said is absolutely true. They did try to mitigate some of our loss of view that we thought was protected from both the dining room and the kitchen. So they mentioned the dining room, but also we had mentioned our concern with the kitchen. Now, kitchen may not be that much to many people, but that is a kind of a V-shaped thing with all windows. My wife loves that view and doesn't mind doing dishes from that view. And so that view is still impacted with the story poles. Now, they were going to lower the parapets from 11 inches height down to four inches height. So I specifically asked if that was done. And Don can address that when he has his other four minutes. The reason that we bought that home was because it was cheap. It was cheap because 10 other people backed out of the escrow ahead of us. It was cheap because of the active landslide that is there. They're calling it historic landslide, but it's not ancient landslide. It's active landslide. And that's why Caltrans is constantly working on that street, right down in front of our property. The property's up above us. The property's down below us. And there is a building permit that's been many years in the making on the smaller home just past this project. And I'm saying all of that to say that I think those-- somebody that's got that kind of money to build that kind of a foundation system is going to help our property. So I appreciate that. You know, it's going to stabilize some of that landslide because it's not just going towards the ocean. It's going that way, kind of off to the right, kind of towards Point Doom. And so that's actually going to help our property. If they can get that kind of a price, it's going to help our property. You know, so I appreciate both of those things. So my only point of coming here today was find out a little bit more information, which was very good information that I found out here. And to say that if they did all of those things, that I'm not going to be opposed to the project, but we're still a little bit disappointed of the loss of the view from the kitchen. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, sir. Norm? Norm Haney?
Good evening, planning commissioners. You know, in looking at the project, and by the way, I'm not part of their team. I've seen this property a lot. I think we've all driven through this area and seen the landslides. Obviously, stabilizing this hillside is going to help Pacific Coast Highway. And we all drive PCH. We can't afford to lose PCH. But the thing that hits me the most about this is something that Don brought up towards the end, which is originally, the community was designed to have two houses in this area, two houses, two garages, two driveways, two wastewater treatment systems, and so on and so forth. And, you know, he also showed that if they developed two homes instead of merging the lots, that in fact, even with a 25% reduction for construction over a manufactured slope that happens to be steeper than four to one, you'd still have a larger total development square footage area. And so I think the variance is justified. I certainly do understand the leach field being in a location which is flat. If it's not flat, then the effluent tends to move down faster towards the slide. If it is flat, it percolates down, but much of the root structure picks the water up. And literally, if it's planted properly, only 30% goes down and 70% goes up in the air. So I'm doing an emergency soldier pile right now on cliffside. And I know what six-foot diameter piles look like with number 18 bars at 80,000 PSI. They're doing an awful lot of work here for not very much return. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Norm. Don, you've got some time left?
Before we start the clock, could you put my PowerPoint back up? Thank you. Given for the record, Don Schmitz. I'd like to speak to Mr. Johnson's comments. And I suppose I should, for the record, say that the Johnsons and I go way back in our Lady of Malibu days and everything else. And we tried very, very hard to work with them. They do have a PVD assessment determination that was done on their property. We went out. We took a look at it. The PVD is in this presentation here. Let me get to it. That's their house. And that's their primary view from where the agreed-upon PVD determination was made. And this is the original design of the house. And as you can see from this rendering, there's absolutely no impact to their primary view, as determined by the city planning department and the Johnsons'. Nevertheless, we wanted to work with them. My client wanted to work with them. So we went out there. We met with them. You can see where my staff put a person I pointed out today. That must be the 25-foot-tall woman. But that's where the point-- the PVD was located. And the area that seemed most critical to me when we did the site visit, from going back into the kitchen and the dining room area, was looking up coast, that area that you can see right there. So I went back and I pleaded the case to my client, who agreed to have Doug Burge's office do a redesign on that. We spent about $15,000 doing the redesign. It was not as inconsequential as it looks, where we simply moved a lot of the master suite from the ocean side back to the garage. It kind of hurt a little bit in regards to the views and everything, but we had to be very careful in regards to the elevator and the stairwell and everything else. So it's important to both-- for us that both the Johnsons and you know that we tried very hard to work with them and everybody else who articulated any concerns as it pertains to the views of the ocean from their property. Again, just reiterating that the design from the public view shed from Pacific Coast Highway, we believe is very sensitive. I do want to address the issue that was raised in regards to the geologic restriction area. And I might have to scroll back really fast, which it's not going to let me, to get back to the caissons. But the reason that the findings, Commissioner Hill, are in there is because nothing seaward of the caisson walls is permitted or proposed by the applicants. And I don't know if I'm going to have enough time to get back to it. I do want to show you that caisson wall again. So the area that we have in there, seaward of the massive caisson foundation wall, if you will, everything down below that area, right in here, is restricted. We're not going to be proposing anything in there. And so the condition that was placed on that was, should anything be anticipated in the future, it would have to have additional geotechnical review. But we're not proposing anything else. We're very happy with this design. And this would be all that we would be doing in that area, including significant limitations on any sort of irrigated landscaping down in that area. We want to keep it dry. We want to keep it stable. And I think it makes the point that, in fact, this project is going to do a lot, as Mr. Johnson testified, to stabilize the neighborhood and the adjacent properties. So again, commissioners, no matter what we do, we're going to be needing that variance for those manufactured slopes that are steeper than two and a half to one. And our plea to you is, again, please provide us relief with the variance from the 25% reduction. We're not greedy. We think what we're proposing is well-designed and well within keeping of the intent of the code. If you have any questions or comments, and you'd like to talk about the design, please do ask.
Anybody else? Would anybody else like to speak on this issue? Now, close the public hearing. Back up to the table. Commissioners, questions?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Norm, could I ask you a question?
You can ask.
Long time ago, you gave a little lecture on the longer the caisson, the more bends. Have you ever done anything with an 80-foot caisson? And do-- with a landslide, will it hold back a landslide?
There are some piles on Malibu Road. And those piles are-- some of them are eight and 10 feet in diameter. And that has to do with liquefaction. It's a little different issue with liquefaction. With liquefaction, your pile is in the bedrock, okay? When the bedrock moves, pile has to move. But if you're in the liquefaction zone, the sand doesn't move. So that pile has to push through that sand, creating a tremendous moment, resistance. With regard to piles, absolutely. Soldier piles do stop landslides. And they also affect the area that is in front of the pile, that's not being restrained. The reason is because a landslide doesn't just occur where the pile's located. It occurs like this. So if your pile is here, and this force and this weight is no longer threatening the other side of the pile, then it reduces the potential for sliding on the downhill side of the landslide or the tail end of the landslide. But yes, they do. It's all a matter of resistance to movement. And that's another reason why you want as much of the effluent percolating to evaporate, because water weighs 62.4 pounds per cubic foot. And when you fill all of the voids in the particles of soil, you do two things. You increase the driving force, which is gravity, because it's heavier, and you reduce the friction. In other words, you're lubricating the friction areas in the slide. And sometimes slides don't have just one slide plane. They have a number of them, and they will slide in the weakest. So you want to keep water out. We've talked about this before. You want to keep water out of the soil that has a low friction factor and a tendency to slide. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Questioned Trevor. I've never had a hearing where we were asked to consider whether the applicant makes money or not. Is that something that we consider when we look at projects, is how much money the applicant makes?
No, I wouldn't think that would be something you would consider here. You need to look at the findings here and whether those can be made.
Okeydoke. Thank you. I'll come back with some more.
Commissioner Hill?
Yeah. Well, can somebody just say with any certainty, how do you know that the slide won't keep moving? Like, what is the certain-- what is the state of it right now? Can somebody-- what's the degree of certainty we have? I mean, so far, it's been-- it keeps moving. Is putting in all these piles going to really change that?
Yes, it will. The positive thing about this property is that the proposed development is at near the head scarp of the landslide. And factors of safety means that we require 1.5 static factor safety, which means the resisting forces are 1.5 the driving forces. So the further toward the head scarp or the upper part of the landslide that you are, the less driving force there is. So the stabilization will require smaller piles and shallower piles than if you were at the toe of the landslide, trying to resist the forces of the entire landslide. So the stabilization system is designed to create the 1.5 static and 1.0 pseudostatic factors of safety for everything behind that soldier pile wall. Now, the good news also with regard to the remainder of the slide below this property is that Caltrans has been ongoing in their stabilization of the lower portion of that landslide. They're currently drilling and installing micropiles and tiebacks to help stabilize the actual right-of-way for them for Pacific Coast Highway, which, again, is going to help stabilize that whole area. As we mentioned before in our discussions, 1978, a portion of Pacific Coast Highway failed, and it was remediated by Caltrans as a remedial repair. It wasn't a permanent repair. And as recently as 1995, as Don Schmitz mentioned, they had to do another repair with a keyway and a layback of some of the middle portion of the slide immediately north of Pacific Coast Highway to keep the right-of-way open. So-- So a combination of all these repairs, as well as what the project is going to do for the upper portion of the slide, is definitely going to help that whole area.
I guess part of my concern is that having done the multiple repairs on the highway by Caltrans and still not fixing it, it seems like the, somehow, either the understanding of it isn't complete, or it's somehow the mountain has been outfoxing Caltrans over the decades. And so it's hard to just feel like, okay, this will finally be the one that fixes it. But let me ask another question. If you're talking about 80-foot caissons, that sounds to me that you're talking about a side slide plane that's at like at least 60 feet below there? Or what's the, how deep is the slide plane that you're using the caisson there for? I mean, I don't know the exact numbers, it's more of a ballpark. And going to the question of the perched groundwater, we're assuming that the evapotranspiration system is going to address all the perched groundwater in and around the site. But with the side slide plane at depth, would we not be getting groundwater coming in from elsewhere on, in the neighborhood, similar to how we've seen in other areas of Malibu, like Big Rock, for example, where we're getting groundwater migrating from higher up? And is that not, I didn't see that that was part of, whether that would influence the perched water in this situation? Are we accounting for the rest of the neighborhood's groundwater?
The geotechnical consultants for the project drilled several borians out there, and they determined that the regional groundwater was, looking at some of their cross-sections from their earlier geotechnical reports, they're probably as much as 60 to 70 feet below grade there. They did a lot of work out there. Of course, Caltrans has drilled a lot of borians too in the last 20 years, and we have groundwater data from them. So the evapotranspiration system is definitely something that's going to greatly reduce any water that's going to be put into the deep subsurface here versus a seepage pit system. The other thing we're doing is we're not going to allow any additional landscaping besides what they're going to do for the evapo system out here. But we're confident about the stabilization and the fact that they're really not going to be increasing the regional groundwater.
Okay. Well, I'll have some other questions, but maybe if other people want to talk about geology.
I want to follow up on that. If the groundwater's at 60 feet, and the evapotranspiration is only putting, I think, 1.15 gallons a day in?
That's correct.
How many thousand years does it take to get down to 60 feet? Or does it ever?
That's the magic of the evapotranspiration system, is that minimal water will percolate into the groundwater and it'd probably be absorbed by soils before it gets down there, I would imagine.
Okay, so what I don't understand is, we have an area outside of the slide on these properties that's flat. And it's a limited area. But below this, below the house, we've got a large area to handle the same amount of water. Why can't that evapotranspiration system be spread out over a larger area below the house instead of above the house?
As Don mentioned earlier, we do not want water, shallow water even, effluent, percolating on a slope, because it could be prone to migrating down the slope and be prone to daylighting, especially in the winter time. So, and the other reason is because we want to put it behind the stabilization system.
I'm sorry, put it behind what?
We want to put it landward of the stabilization system, so it's within, it's within the 1.5 factor of safety zone.
Okay, now, the second question is, could the house be placed closer to PCH with caissons in front of it and meet the 1.5 safety factor?
Yes, it could.
Okay, so we could use that flat area with soldier piles in front of it and other areas than the flat area. It's possible to build a house up in the flat area.
It's more advantageous, and it's a recommendation of the consultants for the project, that the system be put in the flat area for the reasons we've talked about before, and for the reason that, because we want to keep it behind the 1.5 factor of safety line.
Right, but what I'm saying is if you move the caissons down the hill and the house down the hill, you could still get 1.5 safety factor.
You could, the size and the depth and the steel involved in the piles would probably increase, because you're migrating, or putting the stabilization system in the thicker part of the slide with a larger driving force, because you're further down the slide.
Okay.
Do you have any remarks?
There's just a term used, I'm just not sure what it is, the pseudostatic ratio. Is that when something's wet or when it's in motion, or what's that mean?
That's the stability when an earthquake occurs.
Okay, thank you.
When ground shaking occurs, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Jennings?
On one of Mr. Schmitz's slide deck, it says, "Reported location of five hydroggers." Whose are those? Or do you know? This is, it looks like, man. Mr. Schmitz, you want to answer the question then?
Those are Caltrans monitoring stations.
Okay, so, and there's no assessment district similar to the one that exists up in Big Rock in that area to handle removal of excess water or anything like that?
No. There's not a, I think you're not supposed to call them Jihad, because that's pejorative. GAD, geologic hazard abatement district, no, I don't believe that they're, this is one of the city's GADS, no. So these are the five hydroggers that you're referencing from the exhibit, yes. That was taken from one of the reports, yes, sir.
Question on that. Why are they there if your, the slide is apparently south of that? Or that's just the corner of the slide, and you're in the middle of the slide? Why would they put them all on the corner?
How about if I have Mr. Holt, who has the appropriate sheepskin on the wall, answer that one?
That looks just the source point.
Good evening, Commissioners, Jake Holt, Land Phases. I'm the project geologist. In regards to the hydroggers, those were put in by Caltrans, I believe in 1978 or '79, dealing with the localized failure of PCH, would be more on the eastern, I don't have a pointer on me, but on the eastern end of the landslide. So those were installed at the elevation of Malibu Colony Drive, I believe, to help just de-water that particular area as part of that localized repair that they did.
Is there any data on what they're producing, or are they still producing?
I have no idea. Those aren't actively monitored by Caltrans. I've seen no monitoring report by any private consultant. You know, they may be destroyed, they may be non-functional. Just, all's we have record are is that they were installed in 1978 as part of that repair, and we have to show them on our maps for when we turn them into the city.
And what effect on the slide is the work that Caltrans is doing now?
Currently, their work is designed to stabilize the southbound lanes of PCH. So their work, their main function is to stabilize PCH from, I think, if you see the left edge of that, the drawing, the edge of the big Escondido Slide, to the eastern or southernmost margin.
So if the highway is stabilized, why would it not be better to have the houses nearer the stabilized portion of the slide versus as far away as you can get, basically?
Number one, because Caltrans are bound by different rules than we are for single-family residential development. They do not necessarily have to achieve a 1.5 factor of safety. They achieve whatever level of stability they think's prudent for their roadway. And by them stabilizing the roadway, does not necessarily stabilize private property above the landslide. It could help, it's going to help in the long term, but we're not taking any credit for it or relying on any of the work that they do to provide a safe and stable building site for this property.
Thank you. Adrian? Has the city in Malibu ever granted a variance on the hillside organs?
Not sure if we have.
You know, I don't, I don't know that we have.
Okay. Now, also, the house sizes. I looked at the table on the house sizes, and it looks to me like most of the big houses listed are on Seavista, but they're on the wrong Seavista. They're on the northern Seavista. Yeah, the northern, the eastern Seavista, which is not connected to the southern Seavista. So they would be ineligible to be counted. And then when I looked at, I drove around, I didn't see many big houses. In fact, I saw hardly any. So is there any credence to, like, for example, the first one listed on Attachment 3 is, oh, no, not that one. The last one listed is on the other Seavista. So I didn't check them all, but did anybody go and actually find out what the neighborhood really was? Because you drive around, and they're mostly 1950s houses.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
With the exception of Mr. Johnson's.
I'm not sure what map you're referring to. We use the 500-foot radius, which is at the end of the agenda packet.
Well, is that on, is that on, is that number three? Is that your work?
Attachment 11 is the map. And there's only two lots on the other side of Seavista Drive.
And those are big ones, right?
One is a newer one, so I would imagine that one is big. I'm not sure about the second one.
Okay, well, the map, does it look like it goes the other side? It might. There's 18 lots within that circle, and four of them are vacant lots. How many houses do you, your work is Attachment 3?
There were two neighborhood analyses or analyses that were provided to, were provided as part of attachments to this agenda item.
Right.
One was prepared by staff, and the other one was prepared by the applicant. Are we?
The one from staff?
Talking about the one prepared by staff or the other one?
Well, they're both, they both appear to include. Staff was Attachment 3?
Correct.
Well, there's quite a few more than 18 houses on that one. So it can't be a 500-foot radius. So I'm just, you know, I always worry about cherry picking, but when I look through this list, there's a whole bunch of houses, 2,000, you know, in that range. 1,500, 1,600, 1,900.
The commission has the discretion to consider whatever it wants to in terms of neighborhood or relevant to making the variance findings we went with in terms of staff analysis, the information that Adrian has provided, but you have the discretion to, you know.
So we don't have to follow the neighborhood definition?
No, there's not a neighborhood definition. There's a, as we've discussed, there's the discretionary request called neighborhood standards, but you can use whatever you want for a variance.
Okay.
Whatever you find to be relevant to the request.
To put it another way, for the minor modification, we could go with the neighborhood standards definition, but for neighborhood character.
No, I mean, for, there is no, you can evaluate neighborhood character based on whatever you choose.
Okay, but in both cases, Adrian, is this correct, that this house is substantially larger than the averages you came up with?
So, again, the map that I was referring to, which is Attachment 11, that's a 500-foot radius map. And that map, excluding the properties, are on the south side of PCH, does include the properties that were on my list. There's more than 18 properties there, if you count them. And they're the, it's the same number that I included on my list. And so I gave you the lot area as well as the habitable area based on the tax assessor information. So it does give you the information. There, there are some houses that are 4,000, a few that are 5,000 square feet. So it's, but this would be the largest, you know, house in the neighborhood.
Yeah, so looking at, just using the numbers as given, the average is 36-something.
3665.
Yeah, so the proposed is almost twice as big as the average. So that's.
That's correct. And again, we're not comparing apples to apples as we're comparing TDSF versus habitable square footage based on tax assessor, but yes.
What I'd like to know from, I guess, from the other commissioners to ponder here is, my understanding of variance is it's to remedy a deprivation of privileges enjoyed by others in the neighborhood. It's not that they get to ask for relief from costs or something. It's, and so my question would be, what is the privilege that others in the neighborhood are currently enjoying that these guys would be deprived of?
Yeah, Adrian, go first.
I don't know if that was a rhetorical question or an actual question, the.
That's a literal question.
Well, the answer is in the findings. So we did make the finding for that. That is one of the required findings for a variance. So it is in the agenda report as well as the resolution. I can read it if you like.
I didn't catch it, and I don't understand, I'm just asking, what is it?
We can read it if you like.
I mean, they're talking about hardship, and they're, in the whole process of showing us appraisal reports and things and saying we would lose money on it. Well, my understanding is you build a house and you live in it, and you get value out of it that way, and it doesn't, the cost of it is not, should not be something we're weighing here.
So I'll take a shot at kind of summarizing this, and Adrian can jump in. It's kind of a, there are a few layers of issues that have resulted in the request for the variance. It kind of starts with the need to use this envir, evapotranspiration system and citing that on the flattest part of the property, where normally you would cite the house on the flattest part of the property. So since you've got now some citing constraints related to the lot, along with these manufactured slopes that are remnant of previous grading and work that Caltrans has done that went across the property that left areas of steep slopes. And there's just these two remnant kind of steep slope areas that are triggering the need for the hillside development standards. So it's kind of this step one, step two, step three thing. And so the, if the, if the landslide weren't there, if the manufactured slopes hadn't been left behind by Caltrans, then they'd be cited on portions of the property that would not trigger the need for the hillside development standards that then causes 25% reduction in TDSF. So that's my take on it. And if, and then the other issue is the question of whether, you know, it's better for, this isn't so much a question of hardship, but it's, is it better to have two homes with a greater total amount of square footage or one home on the merged lots? So that's kind of all that rolled into one.
All those things sound like common sense, and one could buy them on that level. But if the point about the variance is specifically to remedy the deprivation of privileges enjoyed by others, could you, for example, then say, build a house of the average square footage of 3,600 or even 4,000 square feet and not have to do some of these variances?
Well, I think the issue is the, that what they, what the applicant is having to deal with because of the specifics, physical characteristics of the property is the imposition of the 25% reduction in TDSF. If it weren't for that, they wouldn't be asking for the TDSF variance. They would comply with a TDSF standard.
If there wasn't a standard, you wouldn't have to follow it. But. But, can you, can you tell us what the finding, well, I'd like to hear is, is, which finding are you reading, gonna read us? Or where do we find it?
I guess, uh, the finding we're talking about is Finding One, right? What, what is the, what are their special circumstances or exceptional characteristics applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, topography, location, or, or surroundings such that restrict application of the zoning ordinance deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under the identical zoning classification?
Okay, so the question is, what properties? What other properties? For us to make that finding, it has to be something that somebody else got. And so, we need to know where and how. Can't just make a statement and, and say that there are other properties when there aren't.
So, there, they, they pointed out that the property next door is built on slopes. And, I mean, it doesn't, I don't know what the lot size is relative to this one, but, um, there are other properties that are built on slopes. And, um, the landslide causes special circumstances that they're having to deal with.
I look at that, and I know the property next to it to the south, we just approved.
Right.
And it's not, it was not built on the landslide. And it was not built on slopes.
It's a much smaller house.
And it's a smaller house. So, it did not get any of those Bennys. So, what I'm asking is, what others? I know the Johnson house was way before the hillside ordinance. And I don't see any other houses.
And I don't know if we've had any other houses that had quite the same, um, geotechnical constraints that just, that necessitated this type of foundation system.
I think that kind of.
Across two different lots.
We had a house on Malva Road that proposed having such big caissons that it formed a dam. And, uh, they were eight footers, and there was thirty foot lot, and there were five of them. So, it didn't fit. So, we have had houses like that. And of course, we've got all a big rock.
They didn't, they didn't know, they didn't fully understand the design of the caissons. And that's part of the reason they ended up not getting the extension and, and going back to redesign.
Okay, but, Don, can you tell us where somebody else got what you want?
Yes, sir. Uh, and it's important to differentiate between the two variances. So, uh, the staff report on page nineteen and thirty-five talks about the distances of the homes on both sides of us. And that essentially what we are proposing comes out about the same distance from Sea Vista. In fact, it starts on eighteen of thirty-five. In fact, the two adjacent residential development, developments, which are also located on the south side of Sea Vista Drive, extend laterally into their respective properties approximately a hundred and forty feet from the edge of the road, similar to the proposed development, which extends laterally a hundred and thirty-two feet from the edge of the road. So, it would be wrong to call it a string line, but we all have a lot of familiarity with that concept, right? The, the other difference on why this variance request for the steeper slopes doesn't constitute a special privilege is because of the historical, I was gonna use a pejorative, disturbance of the property from all degrading activities of Caltrans, which steepened up the, uh, the property. Then, lastly, uh, we have, you mentioned the older nature of some of the homes. And properties to the west, which I believe you referenced, are further away from the landslide. The Johnsons immediately to the east of us are right in the landslide, but they're a little bit older than the state-of-the-art geotechnical review that we have to do today. The fact of the matter is, gentlemen, is we have to put the geoflow system up on that beautiful flat place that we would like to be as much as you would like us to be to make this work. And then, uh, wrapping it up, so it doesn't turn into another presentation. The second variance, uh, pertains to the, uh, request for the relief from the twenty-five percent reduction. I have to tell you, uh, I'm, uh, more than a little surprised in regards to the city attorney's response in regards to a per se economic taking. But that being said, I'm not here to have a, a, a legal, uh, debate. We want a permit. If, in fact, this beautiful house design, if you're concerned about the twenty-five percent variance and, uh, the direction from this commission is that, uh, we have a house size which strictly abides by the twenty-five percent reduction on the hillside ordinance, we'll suck it up. We'll abide by that.
What I need to clear, some clarity and understanding.
Go ahead.
They're making the argument that they've done it in writing, and they just, you just did it verbally, verbally, that, that these things don't constitute a special privilege. That's different than what the language for a variance talks about, that it, it's, you needed a few to remedy a deprivation of privileges enjoyed by others. So, I'm not.
They're both, they're both, they're both required, though.
Okay, they're two different things, and so, but I, I'm not sure where we need to come out and, well.
Well, didn't Don just say that the hillside ordinance doesn't need to be waived?
Right.
If that's the, if that's the will of this commission, we will reduce the house size, uh, by the twenty-five percent and, and move on.
I got one question and one statement. This is spec house. We talked about that when.
Yes, sir.
And the, the person who bought it has bought other houses and built other houses. This is not his first rodeo.
Correct.
Okay. How did he not know this when he was buying the house? How, how did he not know what the process was going to be that he was gonna get into?
He did know. He's, him and his partner are sophisticated, uh, gentlemen. They did know that there was a mapped landslide there. However, that being said, what the actual mitigation requirements will be are not something that you, this is gonna sound like a pun. Get to the bottom of until you go out and you do the very deep borings. They take the rock samples back to the laboratory. They do the shear tests. Mr. Dean is tough customer in regards to what he's going to require. There's back and forth in regards to engineering that. Candidly, a million and a half dollars, uh, for this mitigation plan, which, uh, for, i- is in very shallowest portion of the landslide, is a, is a bit of a stunner. I don't think it was anticipated that it was gonna cost that amount. Be that as it may, that's where we're at.
And I guess my statement is, I don't think it's the planning commission's job to manage his real estate portfolio.
Oh, I agree with that.
So, I, I'd like to make.
Well, I'd like to ask, Adrian, before you make a motion, Adrian, what is the square footage allowed following the hillside ordinance?
So, square footage allowed, uh, in compliance with the hillside standard?
Yes. Fifty-three, twenty-five. Okay, and the average, we figured the average is somewhere around thirty-five. So, that's a fifty percent increase.
It's a big increase, yeah.
Yeah, it's not hu- humongous, but it's big. Yeah, a kiss. Okay. You wanna make a motion, Steve?
I got one other question, just, just.
I have a few housekeeping things.
Yeah, just to kind of clarify. I'm still kind of, I'll call it trouble, but I'm just trying to play through in my head. So, we've, we've got a, something we're trying to balance. Um, somebody could help me understand this. The area we've shown on the illustrations, uh, that one's fine. That purple line is where this, the, the slide moves. Up north of that purple line and within the property is where things are stable. And we want to put the, uh, the, the percolation system, whatever the fancy name is. Why can't we set caissons through that and still have percolation happen amongst caissons? I mean, they're just gonna be going, you know, we're just gonna be percolating around those. Couldn't, isn't that a design option this applicant could consider to mitigate?
It sounds like it has to do with the, the flow of the water. And when it's in a flat place, it, it will go down, but if it's in a slope place, it's more likely to daylight.
But with a caisson in the middle of a flat place, it's still just gonna go down the edges of the caisson 'cause it looks like that. It's made of cement, and water will just find its way down the edges. So, I'm just trying to understand.
But it won't daylight because there's not a slope. If it's slanted, if this.
Well, okay, do you understand my question or?
Maybe the, the answer, you're saying, could, could we put the house in that?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of it.
Well, it's evapotranspirative, so it needs to breathe.
Okay, but now, when you look at the illustrations, the building is above the caissons. I mean, so the, you know, the caissons, the, the construction is above, there would be an air gap between the structure and the ground. I don't know. That's, that's the question I want to ask. So, just.
The evapotranspiration system has to be open to air and the sun for it to be effective. Right, you cannot, you cannot put any structures over your evapotranspiration 'cause we use the sunlight to evapotranspare some of the water into the air through the plants.
Got it, okay.
I got a second question on that. I still don't understand, if you basically quadrupled the size of your evapotranspiration area, why isn't that, get rid of more water than when you have a, a, a smaller evapotranspiration area?
So, like, put it down in the other flat area, or where would it quadruple?
Put it down on the side of the hill. I mean, you would think that if you have what looks to me like four times as much space, you evaporate four times as much water.
South of your caissons, though, then.
Commissioner Malza, you're right. If, if you increase the square footage of the evapotranspiration geoflow fields, you can reduce the loading rate quite a bit, uh, from point one-five, which it is right now. But we're not comfortable, I know Jake and, and his geotecto engineer are uncomfortable with putting a system on a slope that's on a slide that could cause problems in the future because of the gravity part of it.
Okay, I just want to point one, one point out to Don. The house directly across from the southern lot, we turned down a variance to move the house closer to the, to the street.
Right.
That was about twelve years ago or something. So, what has happened on the street, I don't think we're considering that here. But, uh, it's not, this, this road is narrow.
It is.
Um, okay.
Would you like Mr. Holt to answer your question in regards to the evapotranspiration?
I, I'd like, Chris.
Yeah, and there's one point I think you guys are missing, too, is in the, in the approved geology and soils reports, the recommendation is, is to keep the evapotranspiration system outside the limits of the historically active landslide. It is not a good practice, and we are not recommending in any way that this, any part of the dosing system go within the slide limits. Adding water to a slide is not a good idea. So, we have to put it, we recommend it to be outside and with a five-foot buffer away from the landslide and still maintaining your eight-foot setback from any foundation systems. And also, keeping in mind, too, the evapotranspiration that's going on, that we're gonna be, that the design is, it's designed to do, you do not get evapotranspiration three hundred and sixty-five days a year. There are some days where you get little to no evapotranspiration, like when it's raining. So, the ground must drain. And so, that area's been tested and been proven it can drain safely and not affect the landslide. Because we do put the evapotranspiration in the slide area, and it's raining. There's gonna be more water going in the slide, and there's gonna be a landslide on PCH, so.
Well, when, when we've approved those kind of systems, in the past, we always had a stormwater storage system. Do we have one on this project? I mean, the house on, uh, PCH, the Silver House, had a hundred thousand gallon underwater storage tank for rain. Do we have anything like that on this property?
The, the public works conditions in regards to that require us to retain filter and discharge. And there's also very specific conditions in the geotechnical reports and the geology approvals that we're not gonna be directing any drainage, uh, into that landslide area. So, those.
But there's no, there is a storage tank, or there isn't?
Well, it, it's not, it's not designed, but, but we are, it's been designed as well? Yes.
Okay.
There is one.
Okay, now, Adrian, is there, in our conditions, is there a condition that says they may not plant on that hill?
That's not currently a condition. We can add that to.
Well, they're saying that it's required.
It's in the geology conditions, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, it's, one of my conditions is that, uh, we will not allow any landscaping.
Do you have any control over landscaping?
Pardon me?
Do you have any sign-off authority on landscaping? Or should we add a condition?
Again, we can add a condition to the resolution as a planning permission.
And you go, Craig? Yeah, uh, first on that same topic of the, the field. Has there been any analysis consideration for how that might affect the property immediately to the west? It seems pretty close to it. What's the, I didn't see, what's, what do we know about that potential interaction?
Yes, if you want, I'll ask Mr. Holt to come back up, but we're required to do that as a matter, of course, uh, for all septic systems, let alone one in this, this, uh, very sensitive area. Uh, there has to be specific, not just findings, but calculations to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the reviewers that there'll be no deleterious impacts on the stability of the adjacent properties, and there's no potential for daylighting effluent.
And we've shown that already?
Well, to answer your question, the house directly south, we approved about a year ago. And, uh, it's not in the, it was built outside of the landslide.
Okay, uh, now, this may change if there, seems like it's heading towards the smaller house. But, uh, on several of the diagrams, it looks like you have a possible two-story basement. If you, if you look at the garage and the actual basement, um, in relation to the, um, natural grade, it's almost two stories below natural grade. I don't know what the criteria is. Does it have to be the entirety of the two stories? Or is there?
The, the garage doesn't qualify it as a basement, so it was, um, counted as square footage as if it was above, above grade. It is partially subterranean, though. So, from, it, it helps aesthetically, but it doesn't help them from a square footage standpoint. Um, the basement area is, uh, not underneath the, it's not underneath the garage. It's in a, a separate area.
I'm, okay, I'm just looking at the line where the natural grade was, and there are two stories beneath the natural grade, so. Or nearly two stories. Okay, uh, railroad ties have been specked on the fire department plan for a stairway around the side. What's the legal status? As I've heard some people saying, those are not allowed anymore, or what, what's the story?
But they're dangerous for fireworks.
Exactly, exactly.
That's, that would be addressed as part of the fire resilient landscaping ordinance coming forward.
Which hasn't, okay, so, you may have to change your steps down the side, yeah.
I don't know. There's absolutely no way there will be any railroad ties or telephone poles or anything with precedent on this project whatsoever.
Okay, and then finally, on the, on the biology review, there's a sentence, this is just about the exterior lighting, uh, shall be low intensity so that there is no off-site glare or, period.
They gotta, they gotta, they gotta be consistent with the dark sky.
Dark sky, yeah. I just wondered what that sentence.
Is that a typo in there?
It's a typo.
What, what was the last word in that sentence? I'd need to know.
What, what condition was it? So, they can make a question, what, what condition was that? Can you just?
It's, it's, it's part of the dark sky. I just wondered what they.
What, what, what condition is it?
Uh, one H.
One H?
It's one H on the biological review.
Well, in, in the resolution, it does talk about exterior lighting must comply with the dark sky.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, I think that takes care of it, right?
I think so. I think so. I just wasn't sure.
Yeah?
Yeah, um, just out of curiosity, uh, a lot of these projects, a lot of these hillside situations do employ hydroggers to try to reduce the possibility. And just out of curiosity, is there some reason why you couldn't locate, or don't recommend that we locate hydroggers, uh, to remove whatever soil might, or whatever water might percolate down the slope?
Well, if necessary, I'll ask Mr. Holt to come on up. But my understanding is that the significant engineering that went into this rendered it moot. The depth of the groundwater rendered it moot. And also, uh, hydroggers are, are not something that one frivolously proposes because it raises all other types of issues in regards to the discharge of that water, the water quality, where that water goes, like down on the Pacific Coast Highway. And as you recollect from looking at the maps of the landslide, you could then be looking at conveying water all the way onto the south side of Pacific Coast Highway. So, we threw a whole lot of concrete and steel into the holes. Uh, and, uh, the, it calculated out to the satisfaction, Chris. Do you have?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Jennings, we, geotechnical staff doesn't, uh, acknowledge de-watering as part of a stabilization system. Now, if the consultants want to recommend it, if we have abnormally high groundwater in the area, they're, they're welcome to do that. But I think you need to get a permit with the, uh, regrow water quality control board to discharge it as well.
Right.
But that's not part of a stabilization system for us.
All right, uh, let's make a motion. Uh, I'm, the motion is that we will approve the staff recommendation but deny the variance seventeen oh two five?
Well, you'd actually be denying the project. You may want to let him withdraw the project to make the change to make the smaller project so it can be approved.
Or you could have a continuance and come back with a redesign.
I don't want a denial. We wouldn't be having this. I don't want a denial. We wouldn't be having this conversation. So the direction from the commission would be that we go back and we redesign and process the house and bring it back to you that does not request relief from the twenty-five percent hillside reduction.
Based on what I've got, we would be denying the variance for the hillside reduction. We would be conditioning for no landscaping below the house, and we would be conditioning for a water storage something unit.
Yeah, we're good with that. To Bonnie.
Is that anybody else?
Well, they... Our staff recommendations to changes in the...
Right.
That could be brought back.
So when the project comes back before... So my suggestion would be to continue to a date uncertain so that they can submit the redesign project, and then we'll incorporate the condition changes and other things.
Should be quick when you come back.
So do we make a motion like Steve just made on those three items?
You don't need to make any motion on the actual resolution. Just a continuance to a date uncertain.
Motion to continue.
So you got those three items, though?
Yeah. Don's got it. Motion to continue.
Okay.
Second?
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move adjourned.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Second?
That wasn't going anyplace.